What?
No.
Okay, there's Robert.
Let's see, there's Robert. He's on vacation.
Yeah.
I'm here.
He's here.
There's Robert, who's on vacation.
Is Maria in stallion?
I don't see him.
Actually, Kim, I'll start vacation Friday.
Oh.
Oh, okay.
Good luck.
Robert is the one up on the left.
I'm not going nowhere.
Well, he was off today. He's just here for the meeting, right, Robert?
Yep. I was off today, but I don't miss a meeting.
He's a very dedicated man.
That's Robert Trevino.
He is. Nice second to it, Mayor.
All in favor, say hi.
Bye.
Do we have the other two council members or what? Oh, I see Maria there.
Sorry.
There's Maria. There's Eric. Eric's a new corps. And Stanley, we're waiting for Stanley.
Jim, would you like to give the invocation again?
Sure, why not? God, God love us all.
There you go. You're on a roll, brother. All right, we'll go ahead and begin. We'll now call the city council meeting to order for July 27th at 6:08 PM. Councilman Jim Bernard will now give the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Let's pray. Your heavenly Father, thank you for being with us tonight. Thank you for your love. Please put your arms around us and guide us and keep us safe. Please pray for all of our people that serve in the community, whether it's law enforcement, fire department, or any other civil service jobs with our staff members. And just keep us safe from this COVID and let's get back to regularly meeting as soon as possible, dear Lord, if possible. In Jesus' name, I pray, we pray, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in the nation under God, indivisible, free, liberty, and justice for all. Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
What's a member Bernard?
Here.
Councilmember Gray?
Here.
Councilmember Sutherland?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Spurlock? Mayor Anderson?
Here.
Stanley's muted.
Stanley, can you unmute?
I don't see. Oh, there he is.
Stanley, can you hear us?
I can.
There you go. Stay here.
Here.
Stay here.
Here, here.
Already there.
We have a call.
First up, we're just acknowledging the reinstitution of Resolution 2020-01, State of Emergency Extension. Next up, under consent agenda, we have the minutes from July 13th, 2020. Be looking for a motion.
My move that we approve the July 13th, 2020, meeting.
Second.
Is there any questions or comments on the minutes?
I just have comments in regards to the minutes themselves. There was a section in there where we had asked for the contract between the sheriff and the city and
Yep.
So we have to get and then also there was a question that Brenda had asked that I wanted to know about as well, where she had said that staff had stated that the funds from that contract had rolled into an existing agreement and that the mandate was that we were using it for school security and she wanted to know if we are the only city paying that fee.
Okay, has there been any headway on that stuff?
As far as the fee for the school resource officers? Sebring has school resource officers in their, in their school, or did last time I know. I did not talk to the sheriff's office in reference to that, but that Sebring had their own. And as far as Lake Placid, they've always been deputy sheriffs down there.
But my question is
Who pays for them?
Yeah, who pays for it? Are we paying pro-rated for the city residents because otherwise we're subsidizing the county? Is the county paying for their share of that officer or are we 100% paying for that?
I can tell you, I can, I did not call, in fact, I talked to sheriff's office and something else I didn't ask them about when I was there. Sheriff paid half and the school board paid half. But I will find out that, see if that's the way it still is or if city's paying for it or anything.
Okay, thank you.
Also.
And the other one also was, is, are they allowed to sublet in their building? Was that in the contract?
Actually, I, I have that for managers. But actually, yeah, actually, I, I have that for later, but I'll cover it now. In the in the agreement, it says LECI may not assign all or a portion of this lease or sublease the whole or any part of the premises, including any improvements erected thereon by LECI or LECOR or any portions of the premises for any purpose without consent of the LECOR. LECOR specifically agrees to allow the department, children, family to utilize the premises for their governmental purposes. So the answer is, other than children, family, no, without consent of LECOR.
Did we have some type of proof or suspicion that there was some type of subletting going on?
I, I, I don't know. I was just asking, you know, whether there is or not, it's, there's a lot of activity there and I was just wondering if, you know, if they did, was it in the contract? I don't care if it's in the contract, but if it's not, then we're still paying all the utilities for somebody else other than the sheriff and I didn't know if that was okay.
I'm sure a simple question to him could clear that up. Right, Mark?
Correct.
And I still would like a copy of the contract if I could, please.
Me too.
You might as well send it to all the council members.
Thank you, Mayor.
I have a comment in reference to the minutes as well. I spoke with Bach about this and he probably is going to add it to his report. In the meeting minutes, it stated, ask about was this, the windows at City Hall and updating the list, was that done?
I have that for the manager's report, but I'll cover that too. I well, first of all, I sent down the resolution that you all agreed to, down to them so they could add it. I then spoke to the, the new individual down there that has just taken over. James Wolf Hope, Wolf Hope. And last week, he sent me the, I asked, I asked him if I could do it and how to go about it. And after he looked into it, last week, he sent me forms and directions and that, and I just, it's going to take a while getting them filled out. I haven't filled them out yet, but the middle of last week, I did receive them.
So it's being updated?
Correct, that he, it, it is able to be updated. I just had to fill it out and get all the information on one things were done and then add the art to it. So it's been, I've got all the forms and, and that, but he did tell me he's brand new at it, so.
Gotcha. No problem. I just want to make that we did touch bases on it.
I did. I do have a question about the windows too. Maybe Mayor can explain to me, why are we looking for aluminum windows? Why aren't vinyl windows satisfactory? Anybody?
I don't know why, I don't know why. Was it a, it's not a historical thing, right?
No.
I didn't, I didn't realize if you were asking me and you said the mayor, I thought you were asking the mayor.
Either one.
Yeah, I, I don't know. I mean, I can tell you, I got vinyl windows in my house, put them in and I like them a lot better. And but I can tell you that we've got to get this back out the bid because these windows are going to be falling out. I, I opened one up the other day to get a wire that's been hanging you know, and the bottom of the window fell off and luckily I was able to get it back together to close it, so.
Well, I know last year we had a bid for a company to provide vinyl windows and everybody decided to pass on that offer. And I, I think they're great. I, like I said, I put them into the, the building, which was the old Army Building, which is a brick building that actually has had metal and steel going through the bricks. The other had to be cut out and those vinyl windows fit perfectly and the cost was a, a lot less than any bid that was made by somebody with aluminum, so I would like to make sure that that is open up to somebody providing vinyl windows also.
Yeah, well, there's, you know, obviously, Jim, as you know, there are different grades. And the, the higher grade vinyl windows are far superior to aluminum, but the lower grade windows are about the same or, or less than aluminum, so.
I, I agree.
I wish that we could, I wish that we could somehow make it uniform so that everything, everyone's quoting us apples for apples and just pick whether we're going to do vinyl or aluminum or whatever.
Well, can you put the grade on it? Can you request a grade?
Well, every brand has their own grade.
Oh.
You know?
If I get, if I get yeah, go ahead. Last year, they guaranteed the windows for life and if anyone gets damaged or broken, they'll replace them. So I think, you know, they, they were the lowest bidder at the time and they guaranteed the windows for life. That's, to me, that's like a no-brainer, so.
Yeah, there's obviously the, the wind load. Is part of that bid that we put out, was part of that for impact glass or was that not part of it hurricane glass or what?
It was for, it was for both, Mayor.
Okay.
And I don't really see a reason for us to cannot impact windows. The windows we've had in there have been there for almost 100 years. I'm sure they weren't hurricane impact windows. Yes, they maybe only been good for 90 years, but I can't see double or triple in the price just to upgrade that.
Right.
That's my opinion.
They better be bulletproof for the price that we got.
Well, does it affect the insurance? Does it affect the insurance if you have damage and it's not impact resistant and it ends up having an impact? Will it be covered?
I think, as far as goes, it goes by what the code is and I don't think that anyone's going to quote you a window that can't make code because they're going to have to be inspected. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So there's definitely an upgradable hurricane window, for sure, but I, like Jim was saying, I don't think that we have to specify a high-impact window.
Okay. I look forward to that.
Obviously, that didn't provide much clarification there, Mark, but
Vinyl windows, they don't need to be hurricane windows. Actually, when I was looking and Jerry helped and updated this, the one that we put out, but I did see on one I was looking at back shortly after I got here, I was looking in another city, they actually put out, you know, they had to be pillow windows or the other ones, so I mean, we, we could look at that too.
Yeah, lowe, yeah.
Right.
The doom plane, absolutely.
Yeah. Well, who would make that call? Would it be Mark?
Yeah.
Okay. Mark, go to Home Depot or Lowe's or anywhere. Find the highest quality windows, bud.
I, I kind of like pillows myself, but
I, I agree. I've put in plenty of pillow windows in my life. They're a very good window.
Right, right now, we just need windows before they fall out on us and with the, you know, we get with the down thing about a doom yet that there isn't a storm outside here and one, a window is going to fall out or fall in, so.
Right. Okay, is there any more discussion on the council minutes?
No, I'm good.
Item number six, Battle of the Bands, Inc.
Did we approve them?
We didn't vote.
Yeah.
We didn't, we didn't vote, guys. What are you doing? Did we have a motion?
I'm making a motion, we approve the minutes.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. Is there any further questions?
No, the minutes were voted on. Brenda and Maria.
We did.
That was the motion in the second?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so we'll now call the roll.
Councilmember Bernard?
Yes.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Sutherland?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Spurlock?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Before we move on, Mayor, can we go back just before there, just so I can mention that previously, the, the governor has entered executive orders allowing us to have these virtual meetings at least a week before the other one expired, but now, of course, this one expires August 1st and he hasn't issued any executive order extending that, so I would suspect that we're not going to get a suspension. We're going to have to have meeting. But what you could do as an option is, you know, have whoever feels healthy and can be separated by the, the, you know, social distancing masks and all that stuff, but anybody that felt like a commissioner or councilperson that felt like they needed to be not being exposed to this due to, you know, health issues could appear virtually, you know, still. And, you know, because you're only required to have three and the health, I think that this, as a health issue, it would certainly meet the requirements of, so if somebody wanted to attend by virtue of meeting, but you're going to have to have a quorum at the, at the council meeting place.
Okay, so staff, we just have to do a good job of coordinating with each council member to make sure we're not going to have more than two out, so we will actually have three present. Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay.
Mayor, can I add something?
Yes.
I spoke with our IT guy Kyle last Wednesday and I told him we would end this week to see about setting up, so if there, obviously with all staff and all, if you want to be there, it'd be kind of hard to social distance. But he believes we can set up where you have a quorum there, if you all want to be there, or just three, that we can still zoom it out so other people, other staff member can be on it or citizens can get in. Just something we need to see if our camera works. If not, I told him we'll get one that does and you all be able to see the screen, they see all of you in, in one wide angle.
Mark, may I ask a question? I only see half, Mark. Um, but as, there you go. As far as the, the city council members themselves, is there a way that, that, you know, I've seen at several places, they have these Plexiglas dividers. Yeah. And, and I know, could we have, if we had that between the council members, because we can't do a six-feet distance.
Well, we could if we moved a couple of you over to where staff usually sits and move staff on the other side, but that's one I need to get with Kyle about, if we did that, if we can move the computers and recording and all that.
Well, like Brenda was saying, it would probably be a lot easier since all the microphones already set up and the chairs are set up, just throw up a Plexiglas barrier there.
But the way I recall being laid out is most of people were, you know, leaning back in their chairs and that, unless you wear that Plexiglas all the way to the wall, you know, you're not going to be covering that with Plexiglas.
Well, let me ask you this, Jerry, are we legally required to be six feet apart?
No, it's a recommendation of the governor. You're same with the limited number of people, you know, that's a, that's a recommendation by the governor and the executive order.
Okay, so if we're making the best effort possible, even if it's not perfect, it's still perfectly legally acceptable?
Well, you know, the, yeah, but I think by default, the CDC, which is six feet of spacing between people and you could do, you could do that. I know I've seen other commission meetings where, you know, they've been spread around the room, just as Mark was recommending, you know, and the mayor made adjustments for that purpose.
Okay. So is anyone opposed to the Plexiglas dividers?
Oh.
Nope.
Okay. Mark, do you think we could try to get that?
Certainly, it's your wish. We'll, Robert, I'll do the best we can to get them.
Very good.
I will tell you.
Go ahead.
I could, I, I will tell you, I recently had a meeting at the and they had Plexiglas on their offices. They had like these little T-things where they're just kind of, where the legs, they're just fed down so they can be taken on and off real easily. I don't know where the mid-forty got them, but they were, you know, four or five feet wide, about this, two or three feet high. Had those little cross feet that just kind of sit right on there. It wasn't a big, you know, elaborate thing to try to put them in there permanently or semi-permanently.
Amazon.
Amazon, there you go, probably so.
Okay, there's, there's one more issue with our next meeting. Kim, could you give the dates of the early voting?
Yes, early voting will be in council chambers from August 6th through the 15th, at which time we will not be able to utilize this building, so if the governor doesn't extend the, the order, then we will either need to cancel the meeting, move or change the date for the meeting or have it somewhere else.
We couldn't do another Zoom meeting?
Not if the governor doesn't allow us because we won't be able to have a quorum.
It goes away August 1st.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay, so
Well, in the past, they just moved everything off to the side. I mean, can they not, well, I guess that is just one time.
They just, they disconnected everything.
Okay.
None of this, none of the electronics will work in here now.
Yeah.
Mayor, your question about the mandate is under Section 2 of Executive Order 20-139. It just says, "All persons in Florida are encouraged to follow appropriate social distancing and safe issued by the CDC and OSHA." So.
Very good. Our next meeting looks like it would fall on the 10th. They're going to be finished up on the 15th. Would it not be a good idea just to simply tentatively schedule it for the 17th in the event that the mandate is not updated? Is anyone opposed to that?
Oh, that's fine.
What day in August?
I'm sorry, can you say that again?
Now, so it's currently scheduled for the 10th, however, they have early voting going until the 15th. So in order to keep the same premises and everything, if we just moved it to that following Monday, which is the 17th, that would be free and clear. If the mandate is not reinstated.
Then move the last one to the 31st?
Well, we could keep it the same. I mean
Okay, that's kind of short notice and snap.
Well, there's going to be, there's going to be less things that pop up in that week than there ordinarily would be two weeks.
That could be a very good thing.
You never know.
Yeah, we're hoping. Anyway, is, is anyone opposed to that? Does that seem like a good idea?
No.
I would take it's fine with me.
That's fine.
Okay.
You're moving the one on the 24th to
We're moving the one on the 10th to the 17th and the 24th stays as planned.
Okay. I'm available on 17.
Very good. Okay. Now, the Battle of the Bands, there's two line items here. One is for the Battle of the Bands, Inc., and then the other is for Naval Park Veterans Day Parade. There's no application for either, so helps out here, Kim.
The applications have not been turned in yet. I did hear from Ms. Feeny today and she's going to turn them in tomorrow, so I, I don't just want to wait till the next meeting or what you want to do.
It looks to me like we've got plenty of time. It's not till November. That would be my vote is just to simply wait till the next time. Anyone opposed to that?
I agree.
Okay.
All right, item number eight. Okay, item number eight, this would be for a public hearing, second reading of ordinance 07-2020. Jerry?
An ordinance amending the future land use map of the city of Avon Park, Florida, in parcel of land totaling .94 acres located at 1501 North Lake Avenue. Future land use of industrial to neighborhood commercial. Amending said amendment to the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity for notification purposes only, providing conservability, providing conflict, providing effective date.
Thank you. We'll need a we'll have a public hearing. This is the second reading. At this time, public hearing is now open for ordinance 07-2020. Anyone wishing to speak now? Kim, let me know if there's anyone in the audience that's wanting to speak.
No, there is not.
Okay. Seeing no speakers, public hearing is now closed. We'll bring it back to the council. We will need a motion.
Make a motion, we approve public courts 07-2020 at 1501 North Lake Avenue.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any further comments or questions? Seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember Bernard?
Yes.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Sutherland?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Spurlock?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously, and if anybody does have any questions, Jennifer from CFRPC is here.
Hey, Jennifer.
Hey, Jennifer.
Hey, Jennifer.
Good to see y'all.
You too.
Good to see you too.
Wow.
All right, we now have 08-2020. This is also a second reading. We'll have a public hearing as well.
It's an ordinance amending the official zoning map of the city of Avon Park, Florida, amending one parcel of land totaling .94 acres located at 1501 North Lake Avenue from the zoning of I-1 light and just inlet industry to C-1, near the commercial, providing for stability, providing effective date.
Okay, this will be a public hearing. Public hearing for ordinance 08-2020. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak can now do so.
And regarding the actual documentation, it, the titles of the council members needs to be updated.
Okay, is there anyone in the public wishing to speak? Kim, is there anyone there?
No.
Okay. Public hearing for ordinance 08-2020 is now closed. We'll need a motion.
Make a motion, we go ahead and approve ordinance number 08-2020 rezoning 1501 North Lake Avenue.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any further questions or comments? Then call the roll.
Councilmember Bernard?
Yes.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Sutherland?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Spurlock?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Okay. Next up, we have item number 10, discussion and award of bid 20-01 for the old fire station. In your packet, you will see several bids there. There is a breakdown sheet that has everyone's bids all on one piece of paper there. For the firehouse teardown, we have excavation point, cross-construction, and environmental holdings. Obviously, excavation point would appear to be the cheapest at $15,575. Do we have questions about these bids?
I have a question for Kim. A while ago, there was another contractor that dropped off an envelope at City Hall and it was sealed. I recall you saying that you had it. Did he not resubmit or did, or was his sealed envelope considered for this particular bid?
No, he did resubmit. And what, listen, I don't know that he resubmitted here because we don't have his information, but he did say he was going to resubmit, so he, he told us he would. But no, we don't, no, we don't have anything from him.
Okay.
He did say he would resubmit because he was going to have to meet all of the requirements, but he, he contacted, he contacted us and said he was going to resubmit, so.
Okay.
Maria, did you have reason to believe that he did submit? Maria, did you have reason to believe that he did submit?
No, he had submitted a while ago when verbal quotes were being obtained. He submitted a sealed envelope to City Hall, and it was never opened that I'm aware of. And then this went to bids. I just didn't know if that was, you know, if Kim is saying that he called and was going to and then didn't.
Yeah, he was, he was aware of it, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Is there any other questions about the bids?
Is this a bid on the fire station?
Yes.
Okay.
For demolition.
Yes.
Correct, 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 correct.
If there's no further questions, entertain a motion.
Make a motion that we award the bid to excavation point, $15,575, to tear down the old fire station in 195 Rose Street.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further questions? Seeing none, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember Bernard?
Yes.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Sutherland?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Spurlock?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you. Next, we have item number 11. I'm sorry, what was that?
I, I said I'm glad because we've been, we've been hooling that around for quite some time now, so.
It is about dag gum time.
Yes.
I second that.
All right, item, item number 11, discussion and award of bid 20-02 for the Wild Building at 101 West Main Street. Again, for this, we have four bids. The lowest bid in excavation point at $84,420. The next one to them is environmental holdings at $86,300. Do we have any questions about the bids or comments?
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to say that, oh, I'd like to talk to Corbett about maybe a, looking into some stuff for that old Wild Building that we might get a grant to save that building. That's one of the oldest buildings, if not the oldest building in Avon Park. And I spoke to staff months ago about this, and nothing was done. Nothing was done. And it irritates me. This is like knocking the front tooth of your girlfriend out and leaving the damn thing like that from now on. I think we need to look into this. You remember, you remember, guys, the song and dance that the county put on to us about, "Oh, we're gonna fill these buildings once the new quarter." We ain't even giving new quarters a chance to get open, and we tearing the buildings down. Let's just wait. I mean, the spring is not that far off, and that build is not costing us any money. Let's wait and see what's gonna happen.
Mayor, may I say something?
Sure.
I, I did look into that. I don't think the deputy mayor was on that meeting. I did into it. There was no historic grants available. There won't be until 2022. And, and they don't know what the specifications for that bid. The last one was for coastal regions. So, there it, there, there wasn't any that I could find. So, I did look into the.
Did we not also get a comment from Corbett about this? I'm going purely off of memory, but I thought that he actually did address this and shared a similar opinion that there was not much available for that building.
So, I have a question. If, if the, if the question is, there's no money to rehab it, if there were money to rehab it, would we be doing that?
Well, if you remember, the engineer said that the building was unstable.
Yes.
What, what engineer said that?
I believe we, I believe Cool and Cobb. I believe we paid Cool and Cobb to do it. If it wasn't them, then it would have been Mr. Longshore from the building department. It's one of the two.
I asked for an architect year old.
Oh, Stanley's frozen.
We'll give him a minute. Maria, do you remember anything about that?
You know, it's been going back and forth so many times. I, I don't recall ever seeing any actual documentation saying this is this. It's always been, you don't want to mess with that building. It's just too old. I've just been, you know, anecdotal. So, I'm kind of with, with Stanley on that. I'd hate to see, you know, the, have it torn down without having some real plan. I get that we can't get any funding for it in the future, but maybe this is something that could be budgeted. I, I'd hate to see another historic building be torn. And by the way, you know, we've gone back and forth with this, but we've never really settled what we want to do with it. And I will tell you that in downtown Barto, a building similar to this shared a wall with a building adjacent to it. It's one of the bigger empty areas, and it's now on their commercial little corner down there by the cookie jar and the courthouse. The damage done to the building adjacent to the one that was torn down, the city of Barto ended up paying the owner of where that empty lot is because of the vibrations and everything. So, I'm really, really leery of something like that happening to us. All they have to do is just say that it caused one crack, and then we own the building next door to it as well. But.
Well, that's what the insurance of the contractors is for.
Exactly.
Then that makes, so, you know, but at the same time, look, I, I just don't recall ever seeing any actual documentation that says this is the, the problem. If we're talking about trying to get a grant, then that implies that if we have the money, we'd fix it. So, is it fixable or not?
Well, I think we've, we've answered that question years ago, and the answer was no.
That's right.
This, this has been brought before council for, I don't know, probably five, six years now. And the, the questions come up over and over and over again of can we do anything with it? And the question answered by two different building inspectors that the building is unsafe, the building needs to be torn down. But furthermore, if you talk to the business owners on either side of it, because there is a business that owns, that, that's literally right next to it, that butts up to it, and they complain constantly of the vermin that come from this building. It's got rats in it, it's got termites in it, it's got bats in it. It smells horrible. I'm telling you, if you walk around this building, it is atrocious.
So, I have a question for Jerry on this one. I know that, what was it? Helen Enig Bonyanier was the lady that had bought the credits on that, or Catalina, or one of those companies. That all of that gets settled, Jerry?
Yeah, we haven't heard anything from that in quite a while. But, you know, she's always seems to, you know, pull something out later on, but there's, but according to, speaking to the trial attorney who handled it, there's, she has no case whatsoever. But that doesn't stop her from bringing up additional cases. You know, so what's the, what's the risk? The risk is that we, you know, have the value of the, of the building, which is zero, right? So, I don't see that there's a huge risk there.
Okay. Any more questions or comments about the Wild Building? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the demolition, award this demolition to excavation point for $84,420.
Do we have a second?
I will second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further questions? Seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember Bernard?
Yes.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Sutherland?
No.
Deputy Mayor Spurlock?
No.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passed. Three in favor, two opposed.
Thank you. Item number 12, we have the trim notice, DR 420, set tentative millage rate, finance director.
Thank you. I actually have several reports that kind of follow them right after another. Am I ready to share, David?
Yes.
All right. We have a quick PowerPoint presentation here for you, but I'm sure you've probably seen most of this in the past. It's been updated, obviously. So, this is basically a discussion about preliminary hearing rate. The first you see here is a history of millage rates over the last 12 years. And you can see that we went from almost six, six mils back in 2009 to point three for the last six, seven years. I did a quick calculation just on the total revenue there that, and had that same millage been appropriated since 2009, basically, the city has forgone approximately $13 million revenue that, by going down to the point three mils. Whoops, I gotta get my right mouse here. Some of the initial considerations are that the initial rate for the trim notices are mailed to property tax owners. Done by the appraiser. Once the, once the DR 420 is certified, the rate may be set lower than the rate on the initial trim notice. You'll note, you'll note that the page is following this report. The bottom, it's line 17 on the DR 420 has the rate set at two mils. That has been traditionally the way the state has done this. Because you cannot go back up once you certify the taxable value. You, you may go down, but you cannot go up. So, this gives us the opportunity to bring it down to where everybody agrees it should be, but we cannot go over two. And talking with Mark, the, did a very similar thing by a higher millage, but belief is that it will be lower than that when the budget is finally approved. And then the initial rate must be submitted to the appraiser by August 4th. Nope, I got the wrong, wrong date there. It should be 2020. That's, I believe, 35 days after he certifies, after the county appraiser certifies the property tax value, which is July 1st. So, we're right on target for that. Some other items that are needed to be completed, the trim rules. Of course, we just talked about the trim rate, the millage rate for the notices. The date, place, and time for the first public hearing on the budget needs to be set. Part of item F14, which will show, which will appear in just a few minutes. The hopefully scheduled for September 14, 2020. And then the authorization to notify the property tax appraiser, which is also going to be part of today's meeting yet. And then putting that notification of the completed forms on the website. Budget workshops need to be set. That's the next agenda item on F13. The regular meetings of the council, or it happened at a regular meeting of the council or at a special meeting. I know that in the past, it has been part of a special meeting, council, and it's also a public meeting, where we get together and discuss the whole budgets as a, a means to perhaps answer some questions in advance. I'm going to jump ahead of Mark here just a little bit and indicate that we're more than willing, I'm more than willing to sit one-on-one with council in my office. We've set up some technology, I guess. We're basically, we're on one side of the room and the other, and we can talk about the budget. However, council, whoever would like to take advantage of that and discuss the questions you may have in, in the budget to the workshops. So that basically the whole process is, feels a little smoother as we go through it. We need to set the date for the workshop. It'll be part, that's agenda item 13, taking the budget work sessions. And then we need to complete that prior to the public hearing, which again is being proposed for September 14. Increases to contract, union contracts are automatic based on those contracts. Then also, there has to be some discussion in the, in the workshops regarding non-union employees. And then finally, we are using the incremental budget format, where for the most part, it's rolled over from the current year, and then additions or subtractions are implemented or incrementally added or subtracted from that budget based on needs of, of the department or based on programs being completed during the current year that no longer have to be considered into next year. With that, I'll open it up to any questions people may have. And the one thing I wanted to say is you'll see my name on two different screens as participants. The one without my video is my desktop, which has no camera, but that's allowing us to share the presentation that you just saw.
Do we have any questions for Dan? All right. So, you can see here, the trim notice is set up to be initially mailed out at the 2% millage. Do we have any, go ahead.
2% millage, who decided that 2%?
It's two mils.
Two mils, not 2%, sorry.
Got you, I got you. But who, who decided that?
Well, there are some limitations. Two mils was what we've traditionally done in the past. Last year and the year before, I believe, and perhaps even the year before that.
And then we all, we always roll it back.
Correct.
Yeah, you can't go up. You can only go down or stay the same. So, you want to give yourself a little bit of wiggle room to do what's certain.
So, the goal is to capture another $535,000 for the general fund. I mean, is there already discussion on what that money would be used for?
What's the 535,000? I don't.
The difference between the gain of the 2% mil versus, I'm sorry, the, the two mil versus the 30 cents?
Yes.
There's been no goal of that discussed in, in the central office at the moment.
Okay, so, I mean, I know that the last year, we, we went ahead and approved the certification. I think we just sent, and then we ended up rolling it back to what it currently is. We didn't implement because there was nothing in the budget that warranted additional expenditures. So, I'm okay with where it's at. I mean, we would have to see, obviously, during budget time if we can roll it back ourselves and just really stick to our current budget and see what's, what we have. But I'm okay with the two.
I got a question.
Go ahead.
To, to sit with each council member and discuss the budget, at what point would you be doing, would, would, would that start at?
Whenever I get, whenever you can schedule a meeting, and it's not, you know, it's, it's voluntary. Wired, but no, I'd be more than happy and willing to sit down with anyone who want to go over in a little more detail than maybe at a public hearing regarding the, you know, regarding the entire budget.
Okay. So, we'll still have the public forum where we come in on Saturday and all that?
Yeah.
Yep, we're required to do that.
Right. Okay.
And, and if I can add, Mayor?
Yes.
It, because Dan, Dan and I still, we sat down for several hours the other day, and we were both busy with something this morning. Hopefully tomorrow morning, something doesn't happen, we're gonna sit down and finalize, going over it, both of us. And me irritating Malilla when I ask how come that's the same as it was last year on line item. But then he will be ready and is, as he said, because it's, it's running down on what's on my manager's report. But it was my, my goal, if you have you, you don't have to, it's all voluntary, to sit down and go over it because he's had a lot of notes on it, on why things have changed or what's being added or deleted. So, it's just an invitation to each of you. Obviously, you don't have to do it. And of course, the, the workshops and all that will be, will follow that.
It will definitely, it'll definitely make the workshop smoother if everybody has a. Uh, it will definitely, it'll definitely make the workshop smoother if everybody has a general understanding before we go in.
I, I for one would like to take him up on that. So I, I know I would because I want to.
Okay. Oh, entertain a motion, set the trim notice.
One last thing. Um, I'll make a motion that we approve the trim notice and page three needs to be updated.
And what needs to be updated?
Page three, the taxing authority certification.
Yeah, um, I did talk, uh, to you, um, I, I spoke with them because, uh, I had some concern that, um, one of the line, oh, I guess it's line sixteen, um, even back in Michigan, it was very rare, I think in twenty-five years, um, be, actually would roll up. Um, and I think in my twenty-five years, that happened twice. And so I just contacted them and said, hey, double check everything. Um, and they said it all looks good. Um, there was another error I thought I had, uh, or that I noticed. And actually I did notice an error in one of their, um, one of their forms that they said, no, that wasn't, there was a mistake there. But they wanted me to call to, uh, have them walk me through the re- uh, the certification process, one, the date, um, uh, there at the bottom of line twenty-seven. And at that point in time, I will update the title there for, uh, the interim city manager, uh, to, uh, to the city manager. So.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay. So Maria, did you make a motion?
Yep, I did.
Your motion was to accept the trim notice as red, so two percent?
Yes.
Was it, was there?
At two mils.
Two mils, excuse me. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
They have a motion in a second. Is there any further questions? Seeing none, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember Bernard?
Yes.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Sutherland?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Spurlock?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
All right. For the discussion of budget work session dates, my opinion would just simply be as soon as possible. So how long do you need to go through and meet with the individual council members if necessary and get all of your plans together so we can have a successful meeting?
Well, um, Mark and I, we just have a couple more departments, uh, who, uh, he, you know, he pointed out a lot of, uh, things he wanted changed. Those are, have all been updated currently. So I think we have, uh, just the, maybe the water and the solid waste, or at least part of the water and the solid waste, and we'll be ready to go. Um, as far as when that meeting will, uh, occur, um, a lot of that depends on, you know, how many, uh, council members would like to meet one-on-one, uh, just so that we have enough time in between for them. But, uh, you know, honestly, uh, I'm pretty wide open. Um, and I, and, uh, you know, outside of that, um, you know, I'm, I'm flexible.
Okay. Jerry, um, obviously if this memorandum doesn't get reinstated, allowing us to have, uh, Zoom meetings, does that also mean that we could not have, uh, Zoom workshops?
No, you can't have official workshops of the ca- of the council. But, I mean, you can meet with a, a single commissioner. You can staff members, you know, by, by Zoom, if that's what you mean. But if you mean like a workshop, no, that does have to be this handled the same as commission meetings.
Okay.
And I, and I will say also that, uh, the one-on-one meetings, uh, you just saw, we were, uh, working out the, you know, sharing the screen. We can do the same thing, um, in workshop if the council member, in the one, if the council member prefers to work from there.
Okay. All right. So would you say anything after, um, the fifteenth is good with you?
Sounds, seems fine to me.
You're, you're talking August fifteenth or September fifteenth?
We're talking August.
August, okay.
Yeah. I mean, obviously this typically gets finalized, uh, sometime in October, correct?
September.
In September?
September, our fiscal year begins October first.
Right. So we need to have, uh, these meetings as soon as possible. There was a mention of, uh, having it on a Saturday. I'm not particularly fond of having it on a Saturday. I think having it, I think would be better with the rest of business, but, um, obviously it's up to the council to decide. I know Jerry, uh, is, Jerry typically is not, uh, attend these budget hearings, correct?
Yep. And, uh, just let me know if you want me to, but, uh, I'm assuming we, I don't, it's like the rest of my cities, I don't attend theirs either.
Okay.
Well, we can set aside the twenty-fourth and the thirty-first Monday nights of August.
Twenty-fourth, we have a regular, we have a regular meeting, the twenty-fourth.
I thought we bumped it out of the way. I mean, could we just do the budget instead on the twen- twenty?
Sure, we can move anything we like.
Well, I mean, I'm just saying, if you wanted to do it during the weekday, I'm, I'm okay with the twenty-fourth if no one wants a Saturday and just use that day as our budget.
Okay.
So are, are they workshops or are they full-fledged meetings?
Well, I think we, we learned last time that it's better to do a full-fledged meeting. That way we can actually make amendments instead of just talking about it.
Right.
Totally agree.
Okay, all right. So I mean.
It's, it's just with, with the understanding that we're only gonna be talking about the budget. We're not gonna be throwing, you know, another random item in there. It's not gonna morph into a regular meeting.
Yeah. That heavy-duty meeting coming on the seventeenth of August, but because we already rescheduled that one because of the voting. So why don't we just have one, one council meeting that month and then just do budget on the twenty-fourth and the thirty-first? And if we're just really, really bad at it, maybe we just do another plan the week of the twenty-fourth, if we don't think we're gonna have enough time on the thirty-first.
I agree.
We can always tentatively put it down for like the twenty-seventh, that we have twenty-four, twenty-seven and thirty-one, if that's good for Dan, because he's gonna have to go back and retweak everything. Um, and then if we don't need the thirty-first and we get done the tw- the twenty-seventh, then great, we cancel the thirty-first.
Very good. Anyone opposed to that?
Nope.
Well, it's up to Dan. I mean, is Dan gonna be, you know, having three days, uh, seventy-two hours to put it together after the twenty-fourth?
I'm, I'm not following, uh.
Uh, excuse me, Maria. I believe we were talking about the twenty-fourth and the thirty-first. Where, where does the seventy-two hours?
Yeah, yeah. No, I said, if, if we wanted to, if it looks like the twenty-fourth, we're gonna need more time than just one more day being the thirty-first, why not throw in the twenty-seventh as well?
Oh, I see.
So.
Three days, seventy-two hours after the twenty-fourth.
Yeah.
Shouldn't, yeah, it's gonna be a problem.
I mean, I, I believe Dan's gonna be ready, you know, like he said, no later than the fifteenth. So the twenty-fourth is already giving him plenty of time. And then we have it another week after that to the thirty-first should be about right to make tweaks to all the paperwork and everything.
That really opens it up out of the one-on-ones, uh, too, then.
Right, right.
Yeah. So we, we'll plan for the twenty-fourth and the, and the thirty-first. Is that, is that right?
Yeah.
That's fine. But I was, yeah, I was just saying, if it's, cause the last time we did it, it took us three separate meetings to do it. We had two Saturdays and then another day. So it was a twenty-fourth and thirty-first.
And we can always have another one the first week of September if need be.
Yeah, I understand that. I just didn't want to keep on pushing it because then we also have to do the fire assessment and, you know, all that. So.
Right. Okay. All right. So the first meeting is scheduled for the twenty-fourth.
Yes.
Yes.
What time, what time are we gonna do it?
Six o'clock.
Um, yeah, six o'clock, like normal.
I think it has to be after, uh, after five.
Okay.
Maybe that's the budget hearing. I don't, I'm getting, might be getting my meetings mixed up, but, uh, definitely.
Six o'clock is fine.
Call the office and, uh, we can schedule, uh, the ones, it can be, uh, during the day, it can be, uh, you know, in the early evening, however, uh, whatever is most, uh, suitable for each individual council member.
And that's after the fifteenth, right? Dan?
Oh, um, I, no, I think it can be before that. I mean, uh, if Mark and I have our last couple of days here, uh, it should be done by the end of this week, shouldn't we, Mark?
Yeah, it could be. Can you hear me?
Okay.
Okay, I'm lighting up. Yeah, I say, and it can be before that.
I thought the fifteenth was the original, uh, date we were throwing out for budget workshop if it were.
Yeah, but no, no one wants a Saturday. That's the whole point.
So, yeah, um, I'll be, we'll be ready well before the fifteenth.
Okay.
Uh, just to verify, um, so the twenty-fourth, I do not show up to a meeting on the twenty-fourth because you're having a, a budget meeting instead of a commission meeting.
Correct.
Thank you.
Just one minute and a half left, Jerry.
Okay. All right. So we took care of that. Anything else on item number thirteen, budget work session dates? Next up, we have the proposed twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one fiscal year mileage budget hearing date.
Okay. Between Kim and I and, uh, and, uh, Mark, um, we thought it's September fourteenth, the budget hearing, uh, prior to the regular meeting. This is a normally, a normally scheduled, uh, council meeting as it is, and it does not conflict with the school or the county, uh, in Avon Park or with Highlands County. So this is, uh, this is the first, I guess, um, prior to, uh, I guess it's the first read that, uh, you would phrase it, I guess, uh.
This is a proposed mileage and budget hearing before the final.
Okay. Very good. So September fourteenth, that sounds good to me. Anyone opposed?
Nope.
Okay. And then for the final, I'm assuming you're talking about the twenty-eighth.
This is the one that does not conflict with the sti- with the school board of the county, yes. Um, and that would be September twenty-eighth. And by then we should have had three or four meetings and, uh, I think we'd be ready to go.
Very good. Anyone opposed to that date?
Nope.
Okay. Moving on, discussion of fire assessment.
Okay. Um, every year, um, this assessment has to be, uh, performed. This is what I'm referring to, excuse me, as an assessment. And this is where, um, uh, I can't remember the name of the firm now. You, Burton, now it's called Stan Tech. They basically, um, contact the, the assessor's office, the appraiser, the county and, and look at, um, the new tax, the parcels that, uh, are new to the, uh, dur- since the year, and also look at the ones that have fallen off the rolls during the year. And, uh, they set a preliminary assessment, uh, of the roll back appraiser. Um, this is at the moment a proposed calendar that, uh, we talked with, uh, with Stan Tech and then also with Chris Rowe, who's with, uh, um, Olive, Miller, Miller, Olive, Brant or?
Ryan.
Brian Miller and Olive.
Thank you. I knew there was an Olive in there. But, uh, and Jerry was also actually involved in some of the discussion, uh, as we were walking through this. Um, there were a couple of years, um, where, um, I think it was Josh or Jason, uh, did this on behalf of the city. Um, and as I told Mark, I could probably run this through myself, but, uh, definitely not this year, um, because I don't really know, uh, the formatting that needed. I don't know that I'd be able to pick it up by next year because we've got other things that we have to make sure, uh, get performed during the year. Next year, we plan on having what I'm calling the full-blown assessment where they actually look at all the properties, uh, they look back at the calls, um, and they basically set new, uh, ceilings, um, which happens every three to five years. So they set new assessment ceilings, at which point, uh, council has the option to, uh, raise that, the, the per parcel assessment. Um, currently we're proposing keeping the assessments as are for this interim review period again. Next year, um, I'm like, it's already on my calendar for mid-September, so we get a nice, uh, head start on it. We plan on, uh, sending that out for bid amongst the, uh, three major players that, uh, that do these assessments. Apparently there's one in Florida that, I think it's Tampa, maybe it's Orlando, I forget, uh, that, uh, did our assessments, uh, back up until about two thousand twelve. And then they opted out, um, uh, later, uh, during that year. Um, and that's when we got Burton and then later Stan Tech who acquired Burton. So this is informational. Uh, one thing I do, I will have to check is, uh, the August eighth, tenth date there. Um, I, I'll have to check to see if the seventeenth, um, because we're moving the meeting to the seventeenth, uh, how that impacts us. I think the only thing it's going to do is, uh, change pieces that, uh, on the fourteenth, those would not be sent until the eighteenth, I believe.
Okay.
So this is just, uh, basically informational for the council so that, uh, it doesn't, uh, they don't, they don't get hit with it, uh, last minute.
Okay.
Very good.
Dan, I have a question regarding the audit. At one of the previous meetings, it was stated that it was behind, that it would, you know, trying to catch up with that. What's, what's the status of that?
Um, I guess, uh, Friday night, late Friday night, I'm gonna say five, six o'clock. Um, I just got, uh, a stack of papers, uh, actually they're right here for me to, uh, to go over. Um, they, and they'll be delivered to, uh, our auditors, Cliff and Harrison, who will, uh, review the papers as well. Um, I just sent, uh, the state a notice, uh, because they asked when they thought, we thought it would be done. And, uh, I was ho- I told them, uh, through Clifton's, uh, internal review process that I would be very pleased if they're done by, uh, mid-September. But if they're not, I wouldn't be surprised either. So we're hoping to get those back as soon.
I'm sorry, you froze there for about, you froze for about three seconds when you were getting a date. I'm sorry.
I might have, uh, hit my, my speaker or something with the, when I put my papers down. Um, I'm hoping by, I, I told the state that I was hoping by September, we would have it back, which is about, uh, five to six weeks out. But, uh, I wouldn't be surprised, uh, if it wasn't a little later yet, based on my, uh, understanding of how CPA firms do a lot of their internal, uh, reviews. So they've got several, uh, levels that they go through, so.
So do, the audit itself, is it gonna, are, are they gonna have, I'm presuming there'll be some deficiencies and some dings and things of that nature. Are any of those already trickling out? Or are you gonna wait till the bitter ends to see what the mass amount is?
Well, Mark has already, uh, stated, um, that he knows the purchasing piece will be, uh, you know, another, uh, another site, you know, they'll be citing us for that. Um, Mark, I don't know what the other things are. There's probably, you know, a few departments that are over budget, um, and also just the fact that they weren't returned back to, uh, uh, Florida Department of Revenue, uh, D E P, um, in, in that reasonable time as well.
So are any of those deficiencies, like you said, I mean, some of them, you already are aware that you have some. Are any of those gonna hinder the budget? I mean, are there gonna be expenses in that audit that are gonna have to be addressed in our new fiscal budget? You know, expenses on, you're gonna have to buy this or implement that or, you know, security, whatever, you know, sometimes there's some items in there. Is, is there, is there any way we're gonna get those, those, those deficiencies ahead of time? I guess is what I'm getting at.
That, um, for the, I don't think so. But, um, you know, there, at that point in time, I guess, uh, there are some, uh, when we go over the budget, there are a lot of, uh, places where, um, you know, I basically left comments that, uh, particularly in the grant area, that if, if we don't have a grant in hand, um, any addition to revenue or expense due to a, a grant will just be, you know, amended during the year. Uh, as for example, the lawnmower grant. Uh, and so I'm hoping that enough in, in the budget, uh, or at least available where, um, I don't, those deficiencies could be addressed. But I don't think there'll be any that will cause a large monetary burden on the budget. where, um, I, those deficiencies could be addressed, but I don't think there'll be any that will cause a large monetary burden on the budget.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else on that? Seeing none, moving on to item number seventeen, New Core Utility Service Agreement and Permit.
Mayor?
Yes.
Can we move, um, eighteen up because that shouldn't have been under Jerry? That should have been under me for staff.
Okay, go ahead. Item number eighteen, Brickle Building Report.
Seeing your packet was huge, as I was telling, um, one of council members earlier, I took mine home, opened it up, and it popped up, went all over the place, so, um, I don't know if you got a chance to, to read the report, which is more than just the mold, but other conditions, um, in the building. So did everybody get a chance to read it?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Is there some particular points that you're wanting to point out?
Well, just about, you know, the, pretty much all the interior wood, except for the outside walls, uh, you know, the, they said it should be, look at, an engineer look at whether anybody should even go up in there. And did I see Carl on?
He was.
Okay, now, yeah.
He's on.
No, you gotta unmute yourself. No, I see.
Can you hear now?
Yeah, I can hear, because it was brought up to me that, um, Carl, in his firm, had looked at this building back in two thousand and seventeen, and, um, back then, um, Carl, I'm reading what you probably wrote here. It said the bottom line is that all structural items inside the building cannot realistically be used in the future. While the outside walls are still quite attractive, the wooden structure will continue to deteriorate in the structural stability unless a roof is installed. The roof was installed, but I, I don't know if, I don't think if any, I don't know if anything else inside was done. So if it wasn't, I would say what Carl wrote in two thousand and seventeen is what this, um, hazardous inspector is pointing out about, like, the second floor.
Can I make a motion? Can I make a motion, Garrett?
Well, I'd rather you listen to the conversation first than make a motion at the end, so we can make the best possible possible. Go ahead. Carl, do you have any comments to what Mark said?
I just would say to you that in two thousand and seventeen, we were asked, make a structural inspection of the building, which we did, and you have, and I provided over to you a copy of that report in two thousand and seventeen. Certainly, the structural condition has not improved in the building. I have read the report regarding the mold, and that situation has not improved either. Uh, the one thing that council needs to be aware of is that when a building gets to a certain deteriorated level, then the Florida Building Code is, by definition, it kicks in. And the important question that, that you have to know regarding this building is, is this building, uh, that, had, did it sustain substantial structural damage? Now, the Florida Building Code goes into quite a detail of what substantial structural damage means. And I spent a lot of time with this, and I went over this with the current building official of the county, Mr. Longshore, and we went word by word over what the Florida Building Code says, substantial, structural inspection or damage in means. And in my report, which I provided another copy of it last week, uh, in my two thousand and seventeen report, it, it was my opinion then, and I'm sure it is still my opinion now, that that building has, uh, endured, uh, substantial structural damage. And what that means is very important to know that, that if you decide to repair it, you have to bring the building up, up, not, you can't just go fix it a little bit. You gotta bring it up to current building code standards. And the problem is, it wasn't designed internally. The first floor is not holding up the second floor in accordance with current building code, and the second, uh, the roof rafters are being held by the second floor. They're not, they were never, they would never comply with the current building code. So you've got a building that cannot reasonably be brought up to current bills. That doesn't have anything to do with the mold. That's just structural. The mold inspectors cautioned you to not go upstairs be, until structural evaluations have been made, and I would just report structural evaluations have been made by me.
I see. Any comments from council on this, uh, report, or what Mr. Cool says?
It's very disheartening. Um, it's, I've, I've never heard about structural deficiencies. It, this, it's, it's just more bad news, unfortunately, you know, and moving forward, gonna try to fix it, or are we gonna try to sell it as is, and someone might just use it as a tax write-off, and we really need to sit down and figure out what our plan of action is gonna be with the building, if we're gonna try to sell it as is. Otherwise, we're spending, you know, we're gonna be spending a million dollars to try to, or more, with no guarantee that someone's gonna buy it. I don't know what, with it, I'm not an expert in any of this, but I, I, I certainly do not want to see that building at all demoed, demoed, but at this rate, give it fifteen years, and, you know, if we sit on it, it's gonna end up being someone else's problem down the line.
Yeah. I agree, and, you know, it would just simply be my comment that, uh, the last thing that we should do is get into the building business as a city, and stay away from trying to fix this building up ourselves. I think it will probably be fairly simple to put a stipulation that the building has to be brought up to code, being that it is deficient. So if we could just have a stipulation even within a reasonable amount of time, I mean, even if it gets done in, in, in a few years, that's better than being dilapidated further. Wouldn't you all agree?
I do.
To that, and honestly, I think that it would be, you know, if we had a plan that if someone was to come in and do that, obviously, it would be the cost plus the cost of the repairs, and then whatever else that would be necessary to turn it into offices or residential upstairs or whatnot, but we need to consider whether or not, um, we should have some type of a contract set out in a real estate fashion. Maybe Jerry can help draft it, where it basically says, we're not interested in you if you don't have X amount of funding to do this project. You know, I, I would don't, I, I really don't want, you know, really nearly to come in there and just piecemeal it like we have had with other buildings downtown, and then there just works in progress. There's gotta be something that we hold for the fire that says, if you don't do it, it reverts back to the city, and all expenses that you've incurred, we're not reimbursing you for. But on that point where I'm willing to donate this building to the best possible scenario contractor that can come in, rehab it and do with it, that's gonna make it a viable commercial structure. Otherwise, we're gonna have the same thing that downtown Sebring has, as, as well as the old hotel, the Kettle, not the Kennelworth, the other one, yeah, Kennelworth. Don't want that. So, look, if, if we can, we, either we need to meet and discuss this, or we can decide, you know, everyone mull it over and discuss it with our new budget, but I don't want the CRA to be tied into this, because this will be the, this will be the bottomless pit of.
The CRA is out now, right? It's, it's not in the CRA's hand, it's in our hands now.
Correct.
Yeah.
Still in the CRA, uh, hands unless, unless you transferred it. Uh, I sent you a memo last year in October on you that, how, how you can transfer it from the, uh, CRA to the, the city.
Done, wasn't it, Jerry?
I don't know that it was done. I don't, I don't recall it being done.
Well, I'll tell you right now.
For advertisement and, uh, and so on. I never heard anything after that.
The memo that, that Kim sent to us later is in that statement that this, it is back in the city's hands.
It's not. It's listed under the Community Redevelopment Agency of the City of Avon Park on the property appraisers website.
Well, I think it's something that Kim can check on and verify, but I, but I don't recall anything, it ultimately being done. I remember you asking me how it could be done, and I, I looked it up under the, the CRA statutes, and, and I sent you a memo on that back in October.
Yeah, we got that today.
Also, I, I sent you another memo regarding, once it's in your hands, you know, and it'd be my recommendation, based on what I've heard tonight, is, uh, what some cities do is they say, you know, make, do it basically art of R F P. You know, we want a proposal. You know, you get the building, this is what you're doing to fix it up and make it, make it what we want it to be. What is your, what are you gonna make it into? Are you gonna make it into a, uh, hotel? Are you gonna make it into a restaurant? Uh, you know, what, all kinds of different things. That's what the city, St. Petersburg, just do with their Marina. But I, I think that's really a good way for you to handle this, so you have some control over when it's gonna be done, how it's gonna be done, and what it's ultimately gonna be when it's done.
Yeah.
And we need to consider whether or not the parking goes with it. I prefer that the city keep the parking and let the building, uh, be the building, and they can use the parking for what they would need. But, you know, if it ends up being a residential thing, then, you know, then you're gonna nap rentals and things like that, and then the parking will be totally, it could cut off entirely for all of those businesses that are there right now. But anyway, I, I don't know when or if you all wanna discuss what the options could be, or if we just want Jerry to draft something, and he keeps tweaking it until we tell him this is what we want.
Uh, I have somebody who already made an offer to me to buy the building. Was that something, uh, it was an extremely low offer. They just personally just contacted me and said they'd be willing to pay a, a minimal amount, and they gave me a price, and at the time, I thought it was too low, but if, and then I don't know why that, those people are actually able to bring it up to, you know, code again. But if you want me to check back with that party, I can do that and see if they're still willing.
We can't just take a quote, you know, it has to be done in a, a procedure.
Exactly.
But, but, um, I, I would also, um, urge you all, I mean, I think that, that, um, Maria was right, you know, we need to basically follow the procedures and get it, get it, um, noticed and sent to, to us, and then when, when we figure it out, let's make sure that we have a timeframe, no matter who, how you do it. Make sure we have a contract for a timeframe that they're gonna get it done, or it reverts to us regardless of what the state is.
Yeah. Agreed. So do we want Jerry to, uh, to draft that, or what?
Yes.
Well, he's gonna need some guidance. So do we give him permission to, to have different council members give them their input on what they'd like to see? Because, I mean, he could have a, uh, moving target document that it ends up costing a lot of money, and, you know, there's gotta be a way for us to come to consensus with that. So, you know, we don't want him just drafting something that's, that no one's gonna like, and then, you know, he's wasting our money.
Well, we could, I mean, we could have it as a line item at our, at our next meeting that we provide him direction. I think if we're doing it individually, you know, we're gonna wind up getting pulled in a lot of different directions.
Right.
Without being able to come together. Right. So I think at our next meeting, we'll just make it a line item, and we'll give him the direction that we wanna give him.
Garrett?
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Since the building, shouldn't, shouldn't we do the building, get the building in our possession, since I thought the building was already in the city's possession, but.
Yeah, either way, that needs to happen, yeah.
Shouldn't we do that first?
What's the benefit of that?
Well, it's just a transfer of title, is it not?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, we can still discuss it.
Well, the procedure that I sent you last year was that, you know, you, you had to put out a notice, and then the, um, part of the notice, somebody else could respond to it if they wanted to, you know, um, outbid the city, you know, but, you know, the way I could, you could do that is just simply do it what we're talking about now. Have, these are, you know, this is what we want done in quality, you know, in the city for this, and, uh, not just somebody who's gonna buy it and sit on it for twenty years, and, uh, you know, make us a proposal, and otherwise, it's gonna go to this, go to the city itself, and they're gonna do the same thing later on.
Yeah.
So, so your suggestion is that we should decide what we want there first, and then, um, transferring over?
Cash, you want, we wanna get out, where you want the cash to go. If it goes to, if you, if the CRA sells it and gets cash for it, then they're, they're gonna get the cash. Uh, I would have to, you know, uh, defer, you know, the staff, uh, as to how, you know, that, if they transfer the, the cash then, if that gets transferred.
Well, does the loan still exist from the city to the CRA?
Say that again?
Does the loan still exist from the seat, from the city to the CRA?
I thought it was forgiven, but I didn't see any documentation to that effect. Maybe, did we do a budget adjustment or something? I don't know.
Well, what I did, go ahead.
I'm sorry, um, my understanding was that was, um, back in February or March. That forgiveness, and so during this current fiscal year, um, the loan is being forgiven, um, and basically, the final discussion I had, um, with, with our, uh, accountant at the time, um, was, are we forgiving the entire loan, or are we forgiving the amount of the loan that was used, and they will refund the remaining, uh, monies that were unused on that loan? And then, uh, likewise, the, the value of the building, I think it was two hundred seventy-five thousand, um, will transfer back to fund as well. That's why I was looking through the paperwork during this discussion, but, uh, that's
The.
That's for the nineteen twenty year.
It, it was the latter. Yeah, Dan, it was the latter description that you gave, where the loan was forgiven, and then the balance of that loan went back to the city.
Okay.
Well, it, you know, I don't know what.
Not the balance of the loan, but the balance of the funds that were unused.
Unused, correct. That went back to the city. And there again, though, um, unrelated to this, and we get, you know, sidetracked here, what did that leave the CRA with? Because you had a negative balance in there, and there was no, um, fund balance remaining. It, it looked like it was, you know, in, in the red. So will they have any money? Do they have money tonight to pay off all those charges?
The forgiveness of that loan, um, essentially provides a revenue source for the CRA, which would take them out of that deficit position.
But, but does the next step to, to, um, forgive the loan while they still had the building? Don't you think we need to transfer the title to the building first? Otherwise, there's an issue as to whether we're transferring, you know, the building, whether that has value, and we've already forgiven the loan.
Right.
Can't it be done simultaneously?
Well, yeah, you could do it simultaneously, you know, closing, but I, I just wanted to make that point before we forgive the loan. The other thing is, you know, as long as that loan is outstanding, if the CRA sells the building, it, you know, it's not gonna get two hundred seventy-five thousand because of hearing on it. You know, so you would end up, you know, getting paid back for the, uh, by the CRA, by whatever proceeds they got, and then.
Exactly.
And you could forgive the rest of it.
That was my next point, yep.
Well, I think everyone's on the same page when, in what we wanna do. So in terms of the legal process, that's staff and, and the city attorney working on that.
Be happy to.
Right?
Right. Yep.
Okay. I just asked.
Yes, it is. All right. Anything else on that? Anything else on the Brickle Building Report? Back to you, back to you, Mark. Okay. Seeing none, we'll go to the, uh, New Core Utility Service Agreement and Permit, item number seventeen. Jerry, that's you, as, as, uh, part of this. Kim also, um, made me aware of the Industrial Waste Water Ordinance oh five dash twenty twenty. Where would you like that to play in?
Put it right after this.
Okay.
Uh, so, um, the, well, after months of negotiation, discussion with, um, New Core, we, we have a, um, amendment to the, their first agreement, which allows them to discharge a certain amount of industrial flows, based on payment and so on, and it also provides a permit by which they have to restrict, uh, restrict their, their flow constituents. A lot of good work done by, um, uh, Kimberly Horn and, and, uh, Carl Cool and Rick on this, uh, to get us to this point. Uh, this is a, the agreement and permit that, uh, we recommend. I would simply say, uh, we, uh, there's a couple of things, so administratively, we need to do, once you approve it, and I assume uh, they need somebody to detail the words in this, because we've been passing back agreements. I wanna make sure that the one that I consider to be the final agreement and permit is the one that we're signing, not signing, actually physically signing, so there's no mistakes on that. So we need somebody to detail that. I could do it, but I don't think you wanna pay me for that. And, um, but, so, staff member, or if you want, I could have somebody, you know, at the, the firm, a paralegal or something, do that. But that needs to be done, uh, because this agreement is very complex, and, you know, a, a change in the word can make a difference. You know, and I'm sure would be, you know, inadvertent by whatever party did it, but we wanna make sure it's the one that we all read on, uh, ultimately. The second thing would be, um, uh, Mayor, when you sign it, I want you to initially. each that you're signing. So we, because, you know, not every page is signed, so we'll make sure that there's no mistake later on that somebody thinks that somebody else inserted a page that's not the proper one. Not saying that New Core would do that or staff would do that, but you know, just eliminates that issue.
Very good. Okay. But do we have questions on the, on the agreement?
I just have, between Jerry and New Core, everything, you both are finally to the point where we're good to go. I mean, there are other issue at this point, no...
Well, I can't speak for Eric, but, you know, we, we, this is the one we sent out and everybody agreed to it. So, and we're going to verify that by going word by word. Somebody is, so.
And we dropped off our signed and notarized copy of it on Friday to Mark and Kim. So we're good to go. We just need the invoice for the face two. I think it's $375,000 and $120 or something like that. So we'll get that turned around as soon as we get the invoice.
Okay.
Just for, just for...
The invoices for my time and the engineer's time as well. Need to get that to them.
Is that in the contract?
Yes.
Yes.
How long did this take? How many hours were devoted to this, Jerry? Do you recall?
I have no clue.
I mean, it's, it's a, it's a, you know, I know that this was...
There was a lot of time that I did spend on the ordinance that was particular to things that New Core wanted to change, but I did not bill them for that because it's our ordinance. We were just getting their input on that. And there was other things that, you know, it was mixed time and I simply didn't bill them for that. I, I billed the city for it. So I don't know exactly what it is, but we have an exact number with regard to the time I spent for New Core because that's in the invoices. I sent out separate invoices. Now, I don't know about the engineers, you know, they assumed that they've been, I told them initially, originally when we, they first came on that they needed to keep separate time for New Core stuff and send that to them. And so I assume they did that. And Carl has kindly said that, you know, his time he spent was really spent on the grant work he was doing on the US 27th. So he's not sending any bills to New Core. So that's where we stand as far as I know. But it's, you know, some, somebody has that. I don't have it right here in front of me.
Well, I'd like, just for, you know, informational, I'd like to know what it costs because at the end of the day, there's going to be a lump sum of all the expenditures with this project. And I'd like to know what that is and whether or not, you know, I know that the county never contributed anything to us, which would, you know, it's too bad. But I'm just curious, if we ever do something like this again, then we'll kind of know in advance what to anticipate. And maybe we can put that in the original documents for the grant, if we ever do another that has a grant.
Yep. Hey, do we have a motion for, do we have a motion for the utility agreement?
I make a motion that we approve the New Core Utility Service Agreement as presented or, and tweaked if necessary, right? I mean, second, I don't...
It's, it's actually...
You all get the gist of it.
It's an amendment, basically, but that, that's fine.
Okay.
All right. Is there any further questions on the agreement?
No, but I, I may suggest that maybe we have somebody on Jerry's staff go over it because I think this is too important for us to not have somebody that's somewhat professional of the contract to make sure everything is dotted on the line correctly.
And I kind of agree with Jim because, and, and not only that, because that our staff is extremely busy right now. So...
That's fine. I've just asked if somebody could scan in the signed copy so I can send that to the firm in Tampa.
Okay.
Hey, Jerry?
Yeah.
Hey, I read through it all over the weekend. It, it's talking about the bill of sale, Exhibit D. That's not included, was it? Being included later?
It, it should be attached.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't see it in my copy here.
Okay.
I got B and C, but I don't see D.
Yeah, we had, we had, I'll have to get that to you if it's not there. I thought, I thought the last one I sent out to Kim was, had everything attached. Had the, had the permit in, in the slot for the permit and had the exhibit. Eric, didn't I get to send you that copy as well?
Yeah, the, the physical copy that we dropped off Friday that we signed and notarized had all of, all the attachments, everything.
What I put in the packet was the agreement and the permit is both in there. They're both in there.
All right. So we should be good. One, one that's been signed will have everything attached. And so everything can be initialed. There's one, one other, well, I guess go ahead and approve it when you hear there's one other issue I need to talk about.
Okay. You want to wait till after the vote, you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay. Is there any further questions on the agreement? Seeing none, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember Bernard?
Yes.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Solon?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Spurlock?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion, passion unanimous?
Thank you. Jerry, you're saying?
Yeah. The, turns out that Saxon Gilmore, you know, I'm not a member of that firm, but I'm of council to them, which is like, my, my firm is partners with their firm type thing. They represent a sister corporation of New Core. Okay. We just found that out. And so we, there will be some future negotiations regarding an additional amount of flows that they're going to seek for blowdown, I guess they call it, for their, their system. And, you know, so there will have to be another contract amendment for that at some point, you know, somebody approves it. I don't see why they wouldn't. But, so I will need to send you a, a conflict letter to ask you to forgive that conflict if you, if you could allow me to work on that. I, we, they, they've already done that with New Core. And so I need to do that with you as well for, before we do any more negotiations.
Okay.
You know which branch they work with, Jerry?
No, I have no idea.
Does that have to be done, done by motion, Jerry?
Because I, I, you know, part of the New Core sentence, so long as we keep a, a Chinese wall, they call it, between me and the firm with regard to my dealings with New Core, they were fine with it. And so, you know, I don't want to break that Chinese wall, which also raises the issue of whether they can review the, I don't know why that would be a problem because it doesn't benefit one person or the other. But I, I'll have to consider whether they can do that or not, or whether we'll have to find somebody else to do that.
Does that have to be done by motion, Jerry, the conflict?
Well, yes. But, you know, I need to send you a letter. So I just want to make sure you're all okay with it. I'll put together the, the conflict letter. And then you'll need to consider the conflict later in another meeting.
Okay.
Very good. Now, moving on to the ordinance. I have an ordinance number 5-2020. Jerry, do you want to read that and brief us on it?
Sure.
I didn't even, yeah.
Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Avon Park, Florida, providing for New Division 6 and Article 5 of Chapter 98 entitled Industrial Waste Water Discharges, providing for purpose and policy, definitions and rules of construction, prohibited discharges, pretreatment in other customer, customer facilities, reporting, analysis, confidential information, enforcement alternatives, providing for repeal of conflicting provisions, providing for inclusion of the code, providing for repeal of conflicting codes, ordinances and resolutions, providing for servability, providing for scrutiny there and providing for an effective date. First reading of 05-20.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Motion, we approve ordinance number 05-2020.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
This is a matter of discussion. The only thing that's changed between the version I sent you before, there's some minor, minor tweaks on limitations and so on that the engineers worked with New Core on. And I asked, I added a whole section called 98-279, Permitted Directives from the City. We worked with New Core on the wording of that. And we all, all in agreement on that. And they're all in agreement to the, the ordinance in general. Eric's here, he can speak to that if you wish.
Okay. Is there any questions or anything to add?
Jerry, did you have this already presented to? I just wanted to ask, Jerry, I, I, didn't we see this already once before, or it got pulled off the agenda once before or something?
About two months ago, we were going to pass it. The New Core had said...
And then we pulled it off twice, I think.
You know, I felt like we could amend it.
It rose.
The issues they had, but, you know, the council, the direction I got from the council, there was no vote, was that, you know, let's just go ahead and work, send it in. So we did that.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else on this? Seeing none, we will call the roll.
Councilmember Bernard?
Yes.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Solon?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Spurlock?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion, passion unanimous?
Thank you. Last but not least, we have the regular update from the city manager.
Oh, can you hear me, Mayor?
Yes.
Okay. I had to go to my iPhone. All right. The, the first one is, I would have had on the agenda of Friday, it kind of came to my attention was, actually watch, or Thursday I was watching TV. If you, if you remember, when COVID-19 hit, we decided that we weren't going to cut people's water off. And it's probably past time to look at stopping that and cutting it off. I painstakingly spent almost all day going through about how many people owed us money since this started because the system we have can't knock out several old debts and, and owing money on garbage and that. And I was working with Savitri the best I can, but it looks like we got about 200 people that owe us money since we stopped cutting it off. And it's probably around, and I say around because I've found a few mistakes in here. Like, the last one I found, we billed somebody $9,000 for water. And when I called Savitri, it turned out to be a mistake. So I don't know why those people haven't called us yet. But, so it's about $25,000. A hundred, a hundred of the 200 owes us under $100. And there's like 25 that are over 200. So it's, 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 my opinion, we should probably cut it off. I've looked at what some other cities are actually doing. Some are cutting it off in September, some in October, August. And a couple of them, like Melbourne is get, is giving them time to pay over a six-month period. I don't know if we want to do that or our people can even keep up with that. But I think it's probably time that we, we start doing cutoffs.
Okay.
So I looked, looked at council for that.
Mark, what was the total amount? What was the total amount?
I would say that it looks the best I can, like I said, going through this, it took me most of the day, about, right around $25,000, give or take, a thousand or something, maybe, if, if everything I got is correct. And like I said...
That's just, okay, that's just water because we also still have arrears on other utility debt, right?
Well, believe me, I told Kim earlier, you know, sometimes things happen for a reason. And my old CPA down at the Sheriff's Office told me I should have been, I'm finding a lot of things we need to sit down and look at in this billing. And I think there's a lot more old debt than we think there is. And I got, and there's a big question on why we're continuing to pick up people's garbage that owe us $7,000. And supposedly, they're allowed to pay $15 a month or something. So, yeah, those are just ones I've stumbled upon without really, really looking.
Well, I think that's a process thing because I recall there being liens that can be placed and being arranged with individuals with outstanding debt. Are they still doing liens and all that?
Yeah, that's a good question because Kim was here when we were talking to Savitri. And Kim said, well, have we put liens on it? And the answer wasn't again, nothing against Savitri, that girl works or, you know, does a good job and is overwhelmed at the moment. But she said, oh, yeah, we can. So that, I take it that they haven't done.
Driving me crazy.
But that, the, the, the whole utility billing is a whole area that I've said since my second week here, once I got a CPA and we got past the budget, between him and Kim and I, we, it really needs to be looked at down there.
So I know that you have a supervisor down there as well, but in terms of the, the liens and all that process, that's just a procedural policy thing, you know. I don't know. I mean, if people are paying their, their bills at the, at the box and they're not coming to the window, you know, what is the time being spent on? That's up to you. I don't need to know because that's an everyday-to-day thing. But I do know that there was quite a bit of money to the tune of about 90-plus thousand dollars in arrears on just plain old utility. But if they're falling behind with liens, I don't know, maybe the courts were closed or something when they couldn't file or whatever. But we all know that the utility billing window is our bread and butter. So if that's falling behind, then it really needs to be addressed ASAP. I know that Savitri knows what needs to be done. I think you know that she knows what needs to be done. So it's just a process thing, in my opinion. But if we're not doing the liens, then we're really losing out. And I agree with you, no one should have a $7,000 bill unless they did service. I'm, you know, did the $60, $60 credits, did that help any for, for people?
It's, it's, it's very hard for me to see and hear because of the way the numbers are when it also includes, because at first I was using the wrong numbers and, and that include the garbage too. And then Savitri told me which numbers to use. So it's really hard for me to see. I can tell you that we've received some, some calls in thanking you all for it. And, and Kim actually has a very touching story on an elderly female, if you want to hear it, about the $60 that you all gave her. If you want to hear, Kim can, basically, she met with an 88-year-old lady downstairs who thought she owed money. It was $2, $2 and something. And she, and trying to do a Reader's Digest version, they moved to Florida, they, they passed through here, they loved Avon Park, they moved here, she lost her husband. And that $60 meant the world to her. So, I mean, kudos to all you that did it, that you, you, you did make some, you know, some hearts feel good on it. So that was a, that was a good story from, from last week.
Well, I have no problem, and I don't know about the rest of the council, of re-implementing the, the status quo from prior COVID because we, we now know that the CARES grants that the county is going to be monitoring should be kicking in in about a week. Individuals that have these outstanding bills will be able to collect from the county and go that route. And hopefully, you know, we can disseminate that information on the water bills and let people know that there's a grant. And what do they do? They call the Sebring Chamber of Commerce. I don't know what the process is, but someone's going to be getting a lot of phone calls.
Yeah, I haven't received back what they're going to do, so, yeah.
Well, but as soon as we get that, yeah, can we put that on a water bill and somehow advertise it for the individuals that, you know, they need to, if, if anything, we're doing, we're doing them a favor to have someone else pay for it again, start telling them that we're going to disconnect them because they need to have proof that they couldn't pay it in order to get the CARES funding.
There you go.
Right, right. And, and actually, in, in, we can put it on the water bill, we can put it on our website. I'm, I'm told from them downstairs, people don't read their water bill. Well, maybe some do, some don't. But yeah, we can put it there and, and on the website. And we can hang something up downstairs so they know.
Well, you know what? As soon as we get the information from the county on how it's going to be dispersed and what they need to do, I would love for whoever is going to be the contact to do that, to do that. Otherwise, you're going to get inundated downstairs with phone calls and no one downstairs will be accepting the applications. It's going to be someone else. So we need to make sure that someone else's phone number is on our bill, right? They're getting paid for it.
Yes, yes. I agree.
So, and if it's a nonprofit, I mean, there'll be two numbers. If you're nonprofit, you call this number. If you're for-profit, you call that number. And if you're a residence, then you do this. So, you know, I don't know how much is going to fit on the water bill, but we got to make a, a huge effort because I think Avon Park needs to capture as much as it can for that, especially the residents that need it so much. Let me, I, I, you know, I wonder, people with $7,000 bills, are they going to submit that, I wonder? They'll have to do that on their own and let the county go through the, the documentation to see if it's a... to see if it's a valid reimbursement for those grants, right?
I would think, or they'll just take the money because they figure they've been getting away for years and paying $15 a month, so.
Well, that can stop.
Yeah. I mean, I know that you can't cut off water for like a restaurant or a family with children and that sort of a thing. And a lot of people as well, but, um, I'm all for you doing whatever it takes to make sure that we get compensated. You know, 95% of the people pay their bills and they shouldn't be having to subsidize the ones that don't.
No, I agree. And, and, and that's why, like I said, 100, 200, oh, under a hundred dollars. So I'm, I'm hoping most of them can, can get it done.
So you don't need a motion for us for that?
No, 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 I just, I just wanted to tell you that I think it was time and, um, so I appreciate it.
Yeah, I think it's a good move.
Yep, agreed.
Most of what I had, I, I already got talked or someone else talked about it, I, I did. But, um, the, um, just let you know, I signed off three master plan CBDG grants last week. Jean got them to us and, um, I signed them, got them back and electronically signed them. And then, um, Kim sent the hard copy they needed. And I don't know if Carl's still on, but I gotta give Carl kudos. I don't know if you remember, but a few meetings ago, I told you that the one engineering firm that was looking at these, the master plan, took, came back and told us water was not acceptable to do a master plan on. And we thought, wow, we really need that. But then Corbett brought up that, well, yes, some are doing it and here's some of the language they're using. Well, Carl found out and it was a short timeframe and Carl got it done for us, working with Kim. So we're, we're really hoping we get that because you know how bad we need that. So that's on, on Carl. Carl does a lot for this city and, um, uh, just a good man to work with, always has been. So anyways, kudos to Carl and we got those three in.
Thank you, Carl.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carl. Again, it's already been covered, but I hope that all five of you, um, take the invite to sit down with Dan and I'll pop in and out on it and that we can kind of work as a team and get this budget. We know we can't get everything we want and we understand both sides and we just want to work as a team on the budget. I told you about an applicant for the Public Works Director last meeting, um, that actually is a PE, has a lot of, um, uh, experience. Well, we did a Zoom interview, as I told you, and the county engineer Gator, who most of you know, said, Mark, you don't hire them, I'd love to hire them, but we got a freeze down here. So we, uh, the, uh, the background came back in, um, today, a star part of it. And we, HR manager, um, David sent, um, a, asked him if he wanted the job. I authorized the $80,000, especially, I mean, he's a PE with a ton of experience. And he sent back today and said, quote, happily accept. I've talked to him twice. He's, uh, very encouraged about it. He is gonna, uh, won't be able to start until I think it's August 31st. Um, he needs some time off reference to where he lives and something he's got to do. And he's had a tough couple of months because he got laid off from a consulting firm because of COVID and, and lack of work, but his boss spoke extremely high of him. So, I mean, we're all excited and I think he's going to be a good fit to the team. And I saw Jerry nodding his head and we need him, uh, so bad, there's no doubt about it. We've covered the local mitigation strategy. We've covered the sheriff's lease, um, the early voting. Updates on, I referenced COVID-19, our one that's been out for going on about six weeks, who was positive, negative and positive, just got another negative, she'll be back to work tomorrow. And, um, she'll be down in billing and really needed down there. Those, those two have been troopers for me, or all of us down there very much. So, um, the other one that has COVID, we spoke to her on Friday. I don't know if Kim had a chance to talk to her today. We try to stay in touch every three or four days, just see how they're doing, if they need anything. She's doing better, but still had a really bad cough and, um, could feel it in her chest and you could hear. And her, uh, loved one, uh, as of Friday, wasn't doing good and was in ICU. So, um, we told her we'd be praying for her. The other one we had out, um, that was quarantining because they had been around somebody. They're working at home and their, their daughter was, got the test results back and, but our employee hasn't. So we're hoping any day, the two firefighters were cleared, but one, um, hurt his knee. So he's out for a bit until he can come back on light duty. So, and we did have one member who, um, was out. It's, um, Mitchell Strickland, who is our parks guy, he was out all last week. His, one of his sons was killed in a car motorcycle accident. So, um, I don't, I don't know if he made it back to work today or not. He was planning on coming back, so, um, you know, if, when it rains, it pours some days. But that's, um, that's all I got.
Mark, what is the, what is this? What do you do in terms of the employees that are sick? I mean, do they use FMLA? Do they use their vacation and sick time? Or is this paid, paid by the city without their vacation and sick?
Yeah, I'm, I've been given COVID pay, what we call it up to, they, um, they have to get up to at least 80 hours of it anyways. They pass that when COVID started, but if they're home because of COVID, I'm paying them.
There you go. That's a good thing. I think that's a good-
And some of them, if they can work at home, they work at home. But there's some employees we have that, you know, they can't do anything at home. But others are, like I said, we got one at home that's, that's working out. And, um, so that's, that's what we've been doing. Like, like our employees don't make that much money and to be out with a COVID or, or, um, quarantine and it would financially be bad on them. So I've been, we've been paying them.
So what are you doing at City Hall? Are the doors still pretty much closed? They're not doing anything at the windows still? I mean, it's, it's still only at the box outside and phone calls?
Yes.
Well, yes and no. I mean, we have people come in, you know, a lot of people that need some help and talk. They're just socially distanced from our people. And, you know, none of us expected this coast to keep going this long. Actually, Robert ordered, we're going to put in a, um, as soon as it comes in, hopefully next week, we're going to put a box downstairs where they can drop it so they don't have to keep walking outside to drop it. That will be mounted to the wall so nobody could walk in and grab it and run off with it. But yeah, we're keeping them, um, as safe as we can downstairs. But they, they, again, they still do have a lot of walk-ins on just some people that just don't understand what to do or, um, just need some guidance in it, so.
Okay. Anything else on the report?
Um, not, well, yeah, I'd like to bring something up. I mean, it's, it's come up by some about, and not just here, other, other, um, outside about keeping up with them. Our guys are, you know, I, I don't, I don't make excuses for anybody. Somebody does something wrong, I'm going to say it or they're not working. But our guys have been busting their butt on this mowing. I, I caught Robert and one of his guys out mowing at the airport to get that done last week in the pouring rain. I mean, it was coming down. I'm like, I hope it's not lightning, which it wasn't. And, um, it, it's like the mall, when I went home Friday, that mall was mowed, looked really good. I come in this morning with all the rain, there it is growing. And I know we've got some ball fields that need work and I spoke to Robert on that. And, um, they were out, um, doing, uh, parts of 20 day to try to get that. So I, I just hope nobody thinks it's because no one's not working. They're, they're, they're really working their, their butts off on, on the mowing.
Mark, may I, may I make a statement? Um, I, I know everybody is, is really doing, is working real hard at the mowing, but the residential area on the south side is horrible. I mean, and I know you're going to say every place needs mowing, but I mean, grass is, is, I want to say waist high. So some of the areas, especially, uh, in the main areas, um, it's just, it's just a fact that, um, it's just, it hasn't been mowed since February.
Well, didn't we have $60,000 that we ended up not using that was going to be for mall maintenance? And then I know that you got your reimbursement from the, um, state in regards to the guards that monitor the, um, work crews. I mean, is there money right there that you could just hire some temporary help until you get whomever you need in place? I mean, you can call one of those 1-800, you know, rent a mower, you know, and, and get someone like that where you don't have to go through a hiring process. You just go through those agencies. I mean, it just seems that, you know, we do have some extra money laying around. I say laying around, if it's still there, I know we did some budget adjustments and stuff. But it would seem that, um, you know, last week you were told that it was okay to go ahead and hire more people. That was for utility and stuff, but you know, typically they can do a little bit more than just that and just start doing that because the money is there. We, you know, that line item with $700,000 in it allows you to hire people. So, you know, I don't know when it'll get better or if the, or if the work crews will ever get back, but maybe we can find some temporary workers. I'm sure some people would like to work temporarily if we have the equipment to be able or go contract with somebody and help out with the more needed places. Do we still have, by the way, River Greens contracted it out to do our football, I mean, our, our sport fields?
Yes.
So, you know, can they do more? You know, could they do the whole field rather than just the exterior edges, you know? I don't know. It's just, this, this won't go away. And I mean, I, I get complaints, you know, I get complaints and people don't listen to these meetings to hear what, what is going on. They see things start and not end and I never hear the end of it. So then I, I send you a, a, you know, snarky letter because it, it just gets really frustrating. There's nothing I can do. And it's like, you know, there's nothing you can do. It just seems like we get stuck on stuck. So if we have the money, then why can't we hire temporary workers? That's, I'm just saying.
Yeah, and, and, and I, I get it when you say a snarky thing. I, I didn't take it that way. I might get a little snarky with Robert sometimes too. I mean, sometimes I want to call him and I said, no, I mean, I, I know what they're doing here. But, uh, yeah, I mean, we can look at that. Robert and I talked about it, uh, probably a month and a half ago. But again, we thought we had our, you know, DOC just doing 27 is a huge thing. But like I said, the, the times I've been up to through Haynes City, I don't think they're, that area, I don't think they've mowed it. Must be theirs to do it too. So it's, um, Robert and I'll, I'll sit down with Robert tomorrow. He was off today and I need to get with him on this Plexiglas and some other stuff. And I mean, we can, we can look at doing that and I'll look at, get with Dan on the budget and, you know, where, where else we've got the money to move it and that. I, I can tell you this, for next budget year, we will, we're putting in $80,000 to try to get a contract to do the mall because we just cannot keep up with that.
That is great.
We cannot keep up with the mall and I want it looking as good as the rest of you. But that takes our guys three days to do it. And, whoop, did I lose you?
Mark, no.
Oh, okay, there you are.
Another thing, I have one other thing that I'd like to ask you about. On the south side, where the city put the garbage cans, the, the garbage people are not emptying them. They are overflowing. So the last time I think that I talked with Robert about it, which was a couple of months ago, someone came down and emptied them. But now-
Hey, Mark, can I say something?
Yeah, because I didn't hear the first thing that Brenda said.
Okay, Brenda?
Yes.
I will deal with that tomorrow morning. Them guys have been told time and time again to get those cans emptied out.
Okay.
Definitely have a talk with them tomorrow morning because they are supposed to be getting those cans every time they go by there.
They pass- Thank you.
Well, and you're, and you're going to, and you, and you're going to see in the budget that comes, the, uh, we're going to be asking for a supervisor over sanitation. One guy cannot do both jobs. It's, it's kind of this in that aspect, but okay. Robert's going to take care of that and Robert, you and I will sit down tomorrow. When you get a chance, um, come on up about this, the, the mowing and the fields. Because the, the one that, I sent it to you, the one that Maria sent to me, I agree. I mean, it, whether someone's, whether someone's using it or not, it needs to look good. It's in the city, so.
Well, the concern was, I'm sorry, go ahead.
One, one other thing is that Robert and, and I don't know, um, Mark, you probably don't know about this, but on, on the far south side of Avon Park, on Williams Gray Court, that area over there, we always forget that area as far as, um, cutting. We send, uh, the, the notices out to the citizens and this, this is what they're telling me. You need to cut your grass. But then the right of way, especially on Williams Gray Court, the grass is, is almost tall as me. So let's-
I understand. Well, I have got places on the, on the north side, south side, middle of town, everywhere. We're trying our best to get to them and we will get to them eventually. It's just trying to get to them.
Do we have a maintenance plan? I mean, is there like, we're going to mow this on Mondays, this on Tuesdays, this on Wednesdays? Or is it just at the beck and call of council's complaints?
The beck and call of council's complaints.
Right now, it's, Brenda's correct. Right now, it's just a beck and call of everybody's complaints because we cannot carry us that we would like to get. I just don't have the staff to do it and we're just bouncing around, putting out fires everywhere right now.
Well, that, which leads me to a question. Jeremy, are you still there?
Yeah, I'm here.
Do I recall at some point, or is it in our LDR that we have it, where the owners of properties have to maintain the right of way that belongs to the city in front of them? Do, do I remember seeing that somewhere?
I, I wouldn't be shocked. Not everyone has it, but that is a fairly common provision.
Yeah, so if that's in there, then that's a code enforcement issue as well. Because I mean, residents have a responsibility as well. I mean, we, we mow around our mailbox and that's in the right of way, you know?
Yeah, this, these areas that I'm speaking of, it's, it's not owned by anybody.
No, I know, but what I'm saying is the vast majority of right of ways that the staff are mowing are, should be maintained by the residents. And I see them going up residential areas and mowing. And to me, it ought to be the residents that own it that do it, you know? Many of them do it already. So I just don't know if we have something like that in place, then, you know, we need to let people know that they're supposed to mow their right of way. It makes sense to me and that would just at least maybe unload a lot of extra work on our staff, right?
Yep, so we can get them to do it. Agreed.
But anyway, if Jerry, I don't know if Jerry, I, I haven't looked at the LDR on that, but it, or code, I don't know.
It is still in place, right? Yes, yeah.
So Jennifer, Jennifer Cody Salisbury about it, you know, and ask her.
Part of the process of cleaning things up. I think the owners and residents and businesses have a responsibility to do that sort of a thing. I don't think that we should be mowing their, their right of way. But anyway, I had a couple of things that I had, go ahead.
What the citizens are saying, if the city is not doing their part, why should they do theirs?
No, I get that, but if we're doing citizens' right of ways, then we're using up all our time and we can't mow our own because we're doing private, you know, right of ways that the residents should be doing.
They ain't doing it. The city, the city's not doing it. From what I'm being told, so I don't know.
I don't know. I mean, Robert would know. Are we mowing right of ways that belong to residents? I've seen them go up and down Camper. I've seen them go up and down Pine. So yeah, we are mowing those right of way.
But they don't want them on the south side.
No, I haven't seen them there.
I'm telling you, they don't know them on the south side.
Brenda, you are absolutely correct. There is a lot of stuff on the south side that hasn't been called. I agree with you. I agree with you 100%. Yeah, and I would love to be able to catch every one of them, but.
Well, just catch the main ones like on Hell Mike Way and Delaney Avenue. I mean, and, and 27 coming up from off of 27 on, uh, Hell Mike Way. I mean, these are sites, area that people see when they first come to the south side. You know, that just, and I'm complaining because people complain to me, so hey.
I understand.
So I had a couple of questions here that I'd like to ask the city manager in regards to some of the, um, comments that we've made in previous meetings. I wanted to get the update on Classic Cladium. We've been talking about their roof and there were two estimates that were provided and someone was supposed to look at a contract to see exactly what we're responsible for. And, you know, rainy seasons upon us again and hurricane season's right around the corner. And what's the status of that?
Classic Cladium, um, I've spoken to them and after speaking to them, I had great kinds on things we turned over to the insurance company. I spoke to city attorney on it, he did too. And so I signed our risk manager to, um, look into things and, and put things together and talk to people. And I spoke, I think it was Jerry, Jerry in the past couple of weeks, two and a half weeks ago, spoke to Cladium, um, Classic- um, Classic Cladium's attorney. And our HR manager was, was off, um, last week. And this week we plan on getting a time with Jerry to talk to him on seeing where we're moving forward on that. So that's where we are now. And I was out at Classic Cladium a week and a half ago and, and talked to the people out there. So.
So we're, so we don't know whether or not we're on the hook for that 200,000, 200,000 or so estimate that was provided?
Not yet. We, we need to talk to them and figure it, figure it out.
Okay. All right. And then the other thing is, Mark, you know, there's a lot of mold hanging off that little, um, at City Hall. The, uh, little balcony that sits upstairs. Can someone go in there with a bucket of bleach and just kind of scrub that off? It just, it's, you know, kind of unsightly.
It's where? I'm not sure what you're talking about.
Right in front of City Hall.
Balcony that faces Main Street. When you drive by, there's a lot of mold on it.
Yeah, I never, yeah, okay.
I don't think you need to pressure clean the whole building. I just think that one little area just needs to be cleaned. The other thing is, um, some of you may be aware, but there was a, you know, uh, uh, a sad situation happening, um, on a house, uh, right off of Green Street, which has been a bone of contention for me for many months in regards to code enforcement issues. And I spoke to, um, Jerry about this earlier in regards, and also emails with the city manager and our code enforcement supervisor. And a lady passed away, um, apparently inside of a trailer that sat in the backyard of this one particular house. And that's a code enforcement violation to have a dwelling, um, there. And so, you know, I don't know that anyone was aware that that was there, but nonetheless, it's a situation where this one particular house apparently has a owner that does what he feels like. Um, we don't seem to have any coordinated effort with the building department with the county. Cause it's not their responsibility to report to us whether or not there's a code violation on the city's side. But, um, uh, an entire wing was added to this house and it was done on a weekend. And then three weekends later, they added another section to connect it to the main house. And it just seems like we've got this continuous thumbs, you know, they just don't have any kind of, um, worry that we're gonna do anything because as long as the county passes the building inspection, then they're good to go. So, um, in talking to Jerry, he said that we do have remedies for this. And even though there haven't been any code enforced, I'm sorry, any magistrate meetings because of COVID, I didn't know what the process was to, to go forward. But, um, I think that it's time that we start using the tools at our disposal, which is our code and use the resources such as Jerry and our supervisor to go ahead and start really honing in on these individuals that abuse our codes. And I'm hoping that the council would be in agreement to allow Jerry to pursue whatever it takes to stop this individual from continuously adding to his building. In addition to that, all of these buildings throughout town that have added and added and added, they have never been reported to the property appraiser. So they're not even paying millage on that. And that's another loss of revenue for the city. So, um, at some point, I know we discussed this six or seven months ago, maybe a little sooner than that, about hiring a building inspector. No, it's not a money-making venture, but if we have one, I would like for staff to really look at that. Because according to the county, they made $60,000 in fees last year in just building inspections. Um, I understand that if we were to take it, take it back, that, um, Mr. Longshore said we would never be able to get back in with the county. I don't know that that's, you know, a, a true statement. I don't know if staff can make those decisions or if it's a county commission decision. But at the end of the day, we are missing an entire component to our code enforcement. If we had a code enforcement officer slash, um, building inspector, they could do numerous things for us where we wouldn't be reliant on people like me, people like the neighbors of this, of this developer that's doing all of this extra stuff to his house without permits. You know, we need to nip this and we need to do a more aggressive approach towards code enforcement. We're already halfway there with our new supervisor and he seems to be really aggressive and on the ball in enforcing our code. But we really don't have the building inspection component. And like I said, I think that, you know, you, if you want to raise taxes, that's one place where I would be more than happy to increase those, those mills to bring that in because we just don't have it right now. And just drive around town. There's illegal sheds all over the place, additions to homes, all kinds of things. And either we collect taxes on them and let them go, or we start enforcing our rules. Uh, you know, that's, that's my say on that.
I agree with you.
Am I allowed to talk?
Yeah, I have, um, Randy LaBelle is on, um, and, and I know that he and, um, the city attorney have talked about this slogan. And he can probably fill you in.
Um, well, I, I, I just assumed not mention the address because I think that would be prudent. Because anybody that watches, it would be like discussing a law enforcement case in front of the suspect.
No, that's okay.
Yeah, I can tell you, we have been on this location. Um, there's currently on this location 35,300 and some dollars and reoccurring fines daily of a hundred dollars. Uh, on this. Now, this particular location, uh, this gentleman owns five locations within the city limits. Uh, three residences and two lots. It is not homesteaded. Um, we've had pretty much problems with every one of his locations. We were set to go again to the magistrate, um, this month and it got, we had two actually dates. The seventh and the 23rd, we had to cancel both of them because our staff, um, one of our staff members who's very vital in this, the magistrates, uh, she got quarantined. So we had to, we had to cancel. But I went out there personally with Eric Longshore on the eighth of last month. There was a stop order put on that location and the guy said, whatever. Eric Longshore can't even do anything about it. I, I talked to him at least weekly on this. He did put a stop order on that and it doesn't, it's, it's not worth the paper that it's written on, much like most of the codes.
We can, we can actually get an injunction on them and, uh,
Right.
go to court and get an injunction. But as a, that, that's a more expensive proposition. But if you don't have code enforcement because of special magistrate can't meet, then, uh, you know, it, it isn't effective process. Plus we can bring them in for depositions and, and, you know, put them on the.
I, I, I agree. I, I honestly, I, I, and echoing what, uh, Ms. Sullivan said, uh, yeah, someone needs to be a poster child. Because of anybody that should be, it should be this person. Um, he routinely doesn't care about, doesn't care about the magistrate, will not, will not show up for magistrate, um, hearings. He knows there's no teeth and basically what it is, is a constant lien that goes against a property that he's never gonna sell. So therefore, you know, we could have $300,000 of fines on this and it's not gonna matter because.
Randy, if it's, um, if it's not, uh, homesteaded, then we can foreclose one of those.
We, we talked about that. Right. And that's if, if we're gonna use it. And that is, as we know, that is the last tool in the code enforcement toolbox that you want to utilize. That is like the final thing. If you've exhausted everything, I think you do something like this. You do a press release, you put it out to press and say, you know what? You're done. We're done with this. Anybody else that has multiple locations in here that decide they just want to build arbitrarily without impunity? I mean, we have to do that. And, and by far, we spoke a couple of weeks ago about this. I did my due diligence. There is no lien on this location. There is no mortgagee or there is no homestead. So it fits the foreclosure, um, aspect of it. But yeah, I'm, I'm all for it. But again, then you, that takes money and that, that's, that's above my pay grade to make those decisions.
And we're depending on it right now. Um, we need to get our lien filed if it isn't already filed.
Oh, it is. It's filed. Yeah. We've got two actually filed and we, we probably will have three more once we get in front of the magistrate. But we have two right now totaling 35,000 and it's, that is worth more than the actual property appraiser. So therefore we, the, the value of the lien is more than the value of the house. Therefore I thought that's, I mean, I think that's what I, all I know is that's when foreclosure proceedings should, should start.
Well, there's, there's a time limitation, but it's not long. It seems to me it's like, like a year or something like that. And, uh, so if they haven't paid him, we can foreclose. Uh, their aspect is we can go both ways. We just can't double up on fines. It's the only thing we can't do.
Right, right, right.
Make him stop doing these crazy things. And, um, uh, but at the same time, you can bring those other code, code actions and when it, when the.
Well, yeah, because if, if we're not, we're not, all these things that are going in front of the magistrate are all new violations. They're not, he's not a repeat violator. I mean, he's got.
What? He's not a repeat violator?
No, he is. But he is, but not on the same, a repeat violator is the same violation.
Okay.
It's gotta be the same violation that is, yes, he is a repeat violator. Okay. But it, he's been, he's been cited for a roof. He's been cited for a fence. He's been cited for the, the structure that he built on, right next to said highway that you're talking about. He, I mean, he's done, he's been cited for grass, cited for everything. So, but that's again, that's why we're at $35,000 in counting every day, a hundred bucks a day. So, yeah.
You know, we, we've been known by, by many people like that individual and many people that watch it happen, that we don't have a strong code enforcement and people take advantage of it. I mean, there's rentals galore around town that abuse our, how would I put it? Benevolence to an extent. And I've, I've gotten to the point where we used to forgive and, and then they'd only pay the administrative costs. I just want you all to know that I'm done with that. We need to start putting more aggressive tune to what we do. Otherwise we're gonna continue to have these problems.
And I, I know this isn't a ARA meeting, but I, just a little, a case in point. Um, last month, you know, I've only been here about eight weeks and it's not me, it's these guys. But, you know, we did, in June, we had 85 code cases. Of those 85, 32 were proactive. I, I'm big on proactive versus reactive. So, but to date in July, we're at 150 code cases and a hundred, of those 150, 137 are proactive. So we're up about 500% in one month, just being proactive. So the, it is a process with these guys. You, what, what I, I just want you guys to know is, yeah, you call it in and three weeks from now, you still see the same violation. Order statute 162 dictates how this works. So we give them the 10 day notice. Most of the time they never, they never comply. Go back out there. Now we sent them a certified letter. That's a notice of violation. Most of the time they don't comply. Now you got two weeks before you get to a magistrate. In a perfect world, of course, in this world right now, we're three, four months backlog. So that, that's the normal thing. We have to do that per statute. That's not something the city of Avon Park can do as opposed to the Highlands County.
And then that insults the injury. Then even when it goes for a special magistrate, the special magistrate can't issue a fine. They have to give them a reasonable time to comply again.
He's been giving him, he, our current magistrate has been given 28 to 35 days extension on top of what we're already giving them. And then when they come back in front of him, that's when the fine starts. Now, that, that, now we're looking at 60 days basically for that, that location, whether it's a vacant lot, whether it's a residential, whether it's a business to come into compliance. And then when they don't come into compliance, which most of them don't, cause I'm still trying to figure out. I'm trying to do a study on the rate of compliance in Avon Park as, because we have to go back out by statute and do reinspection. So we know who's compliant and who isn't. But I, I dare say there may be a 20% compliance rate in this city. But going back to another thing you said also about the structures, the unpermitted structures that are currently out there that have went on permitted. And I, you know, you kind of educated me on something about the 25% on the land use of the structures opposed to the main primary residence. It can't be bigger than that. But we're looking right now, I talked to the magistrate myself, it's not entertaining anything past two years. So if you don't, if that structure that is currently there went on permitted more than two years ago, this is not even being brought in front of them.
Well, then shouldn't those buildings be, yeah, but okay. So if you know that those are gonna be forgiven, shouldn't those be going to the property appraiser and tacking on taxes on those individuals, especially the ones that are not homesteaded? Because that right there, they're bypassing not just us. It's our revenue stream for knowledge. You know, how many of those are out? I don't know. It can't be a huge moneymaker.
There's probably a bunch of them out there though that are.
I don't know.
I, I know two in particular that are there. Yeah.
I don't know where the county gets the.
Oh, I know. I can give you a list of 50.
Right.
Of people that have added on.
But what I can do, when I go into property appraisers office right now, talking to them, it's normally about three years in between pictures. So I can go back and I can look, I guess it's 2017 and I can look and if that structure was there in 2017 or wasn't there, then you know, that's a good chance it was within two years and we can go ahead and forward on it. But as far as code enforcement, we have.
Randy, Randy, why is it two years? Who, who used that number?
That's, that's from the magistrate.
Once again, that's something we can work on because I don't believe that's a statute limitation.
I don't, I don't think it is either, but that's what he, that is his litmus test, I guess, for lack of a better word on what.
Is it workload related though? I mean, is, if it's workload related, but I mean, I don't think that we should settle for two years.
I, I don't think it's workload related. No.
But I think, I think it's, you know, it's, it's another reason why you should get a contract, you know, uh, uh, code person for that, uh, for your building official. You know, not, not, nothing against him, but you know, this is the sort of things we still have to have a witness if we go to court. And if he's not even willing to be a witness, cause it's more than two years, then we've got a real problem with.
Yeah, it is. And you know, there are, there are certain things we have, you know, we just can't arbitrarily go on somebody's property without their permission.
Absolutely.
Oh, yeah. I know you know that. But I mean, people think we can go on there and grab stuff off the property and take it. We can't. We can only go basically where the mailman goes. We just can't go anywhere else. And then we can't peer over fences with any help. If we could see over it normally, that's all case law. That's all set forth.
But if we have, if we have reasonable cause, you know, we, under the right circumstances, we can get, we can get, uh, an administrative warrant.
Well, that's what I'm going, I guess that's where I was segwaying into it would be the administrative, the, the actual inspection warrants. That's something that I know they don't, they have not done in Avon Park. And the inspection warrant is almost like a search warrant in law enforcement where it allows building official, it allows a law enforcement officer and it allows a code enforcement officer to go on the premises and inspect in areas where you can't normally go. So, but again, that, that would be, that, that, that's just one of the things that I have on a list of to-dos. But with two people.
So, so in your opinion, and I, you know, you're saying that there are limitations that the building official has, that he cannot do certain things, whether it be witness or whatnot. Um, I don't, I, I've always felt that we need our own building official, that if, you know, that understands our code and when he goes to do his building inspections, can recognize deficiencies in our LDR. Right now, that's not happening. It's not his job. So.
And he'll tell you that. Yeah, he'll tell you, he'll tell you that real quick. It's not his job. And I like.
So, you know, so you know, are we getting, are we getting what we need? And if we're not, because it's, it's the way that works, then A, either we improve that contract with the county or B, we hire our own building official. You know, we know it's not a money-making venture, but $60,000 you asked me last year in fees, that's sufficient to pay for this position. So my question to Mark is, would you consider hiring an individual that is both building inspector slash code enforcement or building inspector that learns the code enforcement aspect of it? That way we all, we have it in-house. Why can't we do that? You know, do we need more time to mull it over? I mean.
No, no, I'm not, I'm not against it. And if we go back to when we talked about this, maybe my first meeting, I said, can we wait and give me a little time? Because I wanted to get, I mean, as you can see, Randy's on this.
No, I, I get that, but that's what I'm asking now. He's been.
Right, yes. I, I, yes. I, I, I agree. That's, I'm gonna, I've got it. And get with Dan, add another FTE for, so yes, I, I'm, I'm all for it. Whatever works. I want the city cleaned up as much as anybody else does. I just wanted a full-time code enforcement supervisor. As I said back then, I, I, we, you know, we, we need that. I don't think they can be both. I mean, I.
I, I don't, I don't think it can be. I think you need, yeah, it would be, I can be honest with you. I've never talked to any other city. I, 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 my model that I use a lot is Cape Coral. And I know it's not apples to apples. It's, it's not, they got 40, they have 40 code enforcement officers there, but they do things right. I mean, and I always call the, the supervisor there. If I have a question or something like that, I'm like, how do you guys do it there? And I mean, it's, the building inspector should always be separate. Um, because honestly, the, the code, code is not rocket science. I mean, you can.
No, I understand him being separate, Randy, but he would understand it. That way he can point out issues.
Absolutely.
You know, I just did an inspection and they don't have a permit or they, the setbacks aren't meeting, even though they had a permit. They're not fixing their setbacks or they built it in the wrong place. Those are the things that the county are going to look at for us. So even if we had a part-time building inspector, I think. So even if we had a part-time building inspector, I think it would be well worth it. There's plenty of retired contractors that likely would want to stay a level of busy at this point. So I just think that it's, you know, if the council would.
No, and I think what you're talking about, we could work more as a team.
Okay, if you're pursuing those injunction issues, just let me know. Um I I don't, you know, I don't do trial work, but I can do the depositions. I just don't have time to do trials because of all the requirements now.
Well, you know, the whole reason of bringing this up tonight was so that the whole council did and I don't know if they would support. Um and I hope they do because I certainly do, is to go ahead and give the city attorney and our city manager and our code enforcement supervisor the tools to go ahead and make sure that that we stop the habitual breaking of our code by this particular individual. And there are others.
There are others.
We go ahead and start this because we just can't keep, it just, it's 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 getting out of hand. You don't get the number of, maybe you do get the number of phone calls.
I do.
I know you do, but it's it's, you know, we need to move forward with this. And if Jerry has that consensus, then it allows him to do that. And I would look, I would hope if you need a motion for that, I'll make a motion. If it's just the general consensus. Jerry, you tell me what it is you need and and, you know, see what the rest of the council says.
When we get ready to file a complaint in court, I'll need your approval. You know, so but right now, I think if you have the consensus that that's how you want to head, we'll look into what all the possibilities are and go every possibility we can.
Yes.
Yes.
All right. So and I know that Stanley, I don't know if he's still on, I think I saw his name leave. Um I know that there's a a particular property near him that also is the same thing. You know, they turned a a garage into a dwelling, you know, and they rented out. And, you know, they they do weekends and it's been just constant. So and there are more. It's not just one person. We have plenty of poster childs that represent this, but I would like to be known as a city that has a good code enforcement department that doesn't let people get away with things that ruins the property values of the adjacent neighbors. I mean, it, wouldn't it be nice?
Well, a big, a great, a a great uh uh advantage if you all would do what you mentioned before and that is don't forgive everything that comes before you.
No, honestly, I'm done forgiving. I I'm done with that. Done that so many times at I I did our house on Bell Street that we forgave this huge lien. And it's it's worse now than it was then. You know, the the owner just isn't there and it's sits vacant. It's got a thirty thirty refrigerators and stoves and I don't know what else in the backyard and in the porch. It's 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 nothing more than a harvesting area for for copper, you know? And they dump all their stuff out on the street. So no, I I'm done forgiving. I think it's it's time that we just put the notice out there to our residents and anyone wanting to live here. You're not gonna get away with it anymore.
Hey, um can I just say one thing to Randy?
Yes, ma'am.
I don't really know you, but welcome.
I remember you, yeah. I remember you from probation and parole, yeah.
There you go. And listen.
Wait, were you on probation? Is that what it was?
No.
No.
He should have been.
I'd have bit too. Probably should have been.
There's this this, there's this property, you probably already know about it, on Hell Mike Way next to the, well, that has a shed on it without a house.
That's the same owner. That's the same owner. That matter of fact, there is a, hang on, I'll tell you right here. That is three eighteen.
Okay.
Currently, there is running fines on that one of sixteen thousand five hundred and forty-two dollars.
Yeah, Brenda, you're not allowed to have an accessory structure with it up, without a primary.
That is the same person that Maria was talking about.
Yeah, and and the thing is.
I'm not surprised.
That, yeah, the 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 neighbors are saying, well, you live over here now, can't you do something? I'm like, well.
Yeah, you know.
Okay, but long as you know about it, we're good.
Oh, I know about it. I I go by there all the time. Yeah, it's, I know the address.
Welcome. Welcome.
All right. Is there anything else for the city manager's report?
Oh, there, that's it.
Okay, anything else for the good of the city? What's that?
I said, thank you, Randy and Jerry.
Oh, yeah, thank you, Randy. Thank you, Jerry. Is there anything else for the good of the city?
Nope.
Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, please.
Seeing no opposition, we are adjourned. Thanks, everybody.